This is now our time for open forum, and I see the court coming with some cards here. If you do wish to speak on any topic during open forum, there's blue cards both out in the hallway and up here by the microphone, and just sign that card and you get four minutes. The first one is Mr. Larry Downs Jr., subjects ESP. Welcome, Mr. Downs.
Thank you. Good evening, Councilman. I would like to start by addressing the council. There's a water heater installation program that is going to be introduced by ESP, Energy Services of Pensacola. This water heater program that's going to be implemented is going to impact local businesses, and it's going to impact them in many ways, even from the supply houses that provide the water heaters by not only plumbing contractors but also homeowners as well, purchase these water heaters at these plumbing supply houses and also Lowe's, Home Depot, Sears, et cetera. Whenever ESP goes in this water heater installation program, they're going to be purchasing the water heaters. And from what I understand, some of the supply houses didn't even get an opportunity to bid on that, local supply houses that employ local people who live in the city and in the county. This is not a fair plan. It also is not fair to the plumbing companies who are out every day bidding work, bidding installations, in the free market. The customer has an option to go with the lowest bid or the highest bid and contact freely in the free market anybody they want to that's licensed in the county or the city. When ESP implements this plan, that's not going to be an option. I mean, it still would be an option, but it's not going to be a viable option to a homeowner because ESP's going to be giving these water heaters away, from what I understand, and they're already advertising that. We can't compete with their bids. They have also already had a meeting back in March that they had numerous plumbers come to this meeting to figure out a price that the installations would be installed for, from the very low to the very high prices of each one of these plumbers that were at the meeting. I wasn't given an opportunity to participate in this meeting. I also believe that that is against law that regulates price fixing. Whenever you get a group of companies together to fix a price, doesn't matter whether it's for a general contractor or not, that's price fixing, and that's exactly what they've done. And in my opinion, I believe they're acting as a contractor because they are going to award these contracts that they go out and bid with the customer, to the plumbers that are participating in this program, who have decided to go with their price. That's not fair in free market. It's going to impact local businesses and families that work for those businesses. Even the big retailers such as Lowe's and Home Depot have water heater installation programs. That's going to impact them, because how are they going to compete? They can't afford to give away water heaters just to sell more gas. They're not selling gas. This is not a fair program, and I'm asking y'all, since y'all somewhat, I'm pretty sure y'all are over Energy Services of Pensacola since it's owned by the city, to stop this action that's about to take place in June. At least put a damper on it quickly so that some research can be done and some fair market practices be implemented. Because Lowe's, Home Depot, Sears, Gorman Companies, Southern Pipe, Winn Nelson, who just took the place of, basically took the place of Bogans that went out of business, they don't have the option to send out mailers to the customers saying that we are going to be doing a water heater install plan and we can provide your services.
You may get a chance to speak some more, but Mr. Weiss, I think, wants to respond.
Mr. Moore, do you have any further thoughts on how you'd like for us to proceed? I certainly want more information as an information item to us, but I think this would need to be on our next committee of the whole agenda for discussion, once we understand it better. Is that acceptable to you, to have this be looked at during our Monday meeting?
Absolutely. And I would hope that we, you know, that we would be, the citizens would be able to participate in this meeting.
Absolutely.
To get some information back and forth both ways. But I definitely hope that this can be at least, until the, you know, until the facts come out, because this possibly could even be illegal. I believe it is illegal to price fix, and I believe that's what took place, talking to the plumbers that attended that meeting. And that's not fair. I mean, it ain't even fair to the customer. They're fixing a price somewhere in the middle. They would have had an option to call that lowest-priced plumber.
Mr. President, would it be appropriate to have a motion, or can we just ask that this be, information be gathered and we have it on our next committee of the whole? What would you prefer?
Well, if we're going to take it up as a business item, I'd want to do it during new business portion of the meeting.
Okay, so I'll make that motion later in the meeting, that this be...
But also, Mr. Reynolds, the city administrator, had a comment. Is that up with you, Mr. Weiss?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. As council will note in the committee of the whole meeting, we had an information item on this program. Just to remind council, the facts behind the program, in September of 2011, as part of the budget process, you approved this program. This program provides a quote to customers, ensures that there's an existing natural gas service, then plumbers are assigned jobs on a rotating basis. Plumbers schedule the installation and pull the permits, so in other words, we coordinate plumbers' plum. ESP provides the appliances after permits are pulled for each assigned job. After final inspection, ESP bills the customer and pays the plumber for the installation. The program includes only standard installation, and plumbers obviously must provide proof of master gas and master plumbing licenses and minimum insurance requirements. It's the intent of ESP and the mayor's office to move forward with this program. It is something that this body has already approved. Per your request, we brought the information item to you, and before we're going to move forward with the program, and so that's where we are at this point. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. So if you want to stick around to new business, I don't know if there's going to be much relief for you there, but that's towards the end of the meeting, and we can discuss that further than, okay?
I will. Can I address one thing that the...
Quickly.
...city? There's also, it's not just plumbers that are being affected by this, also electricians. They've even got a price quote in there to where the plumber is going to be allowed something like $350 to pay an electrician for a gas conversion, which is not change outs. They're going to go way above and beyond that. They're going to do change outs, they're going to do conversions from tank to tankless, which requires electrical work. That is all contracting. That is not simply coordinating. When you collect from a customer, pay a sub, that's general contracting, and you have to have a general contractor's license for one, to do it.
Okay. Mr. A, we'll give you a chance to speak during new business, okay? All right, thank you.
Mr. President, I just wanted to ask him also to send us email or something with some of his specific comments, and that way we can try to work with the administration and address the questions. You know, when you speak them, we hear them, but they don't quite, we can't quite remember exactly how...
I'll get you all the facts.
If you'll send an email, that would be great. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Dixie Mize. Welcome, Ms. Mize.
Thank you, counsel. President Hall, I'm going to ask you again, please step down for the behalf of the city. We went to one of the council, we just don't think you've done a good job as a president. That being said, on your mic card, you will see I'm speaking for the homeless. Yes, I am from Occupy. We do not support the homeless, we will embrace them. Now, you all realize that the waterfront mission last night was Sunday night, which means here in the city, there is no place for them to go, have you? You might notice that on the corner that Occupy often stands and hands down information, we have homeless there, not because we advertise it, not because it's not a place to be. A corner is not a place to live. But thanks to the city, the waterfront mission is closed. Now, there is a brand-new wonderful, from what I've heard, I've not seen it personally, in the county on Fairfield, is a great distance away. It's a hard walk, and if you don't have bus money, or a bike, or a vehicle, it's difficult to get there. What does this city intend to do for our homeless? You can't push them under the rug. You can't push them back into the woods. Now, I was here, what, four months ago, five months ago, when we had a little discussion, and President Hall, you talked how you had had six people homeless, okay, and we all shared stories. We're going to have more than six. We're going to have quite a few. Does this council have any plan of what we're going to do? These are people. Anybody have an answer? That's what I was afraid of. Now, Ms. Myers, I want to thank you for all the support that you have done for the hungry and the homeless in your district and in the city. You've worked very hard. I know you've worked very hard with Father Monk and several of the council halves. But you're all looking at me like I have three heads. I don't. This is a question that you were supposed to answer a few months back. Nobody has bothered. President Hall, do you have an answer?
You've still got your five minutes. If you wish to talk, I'm not responding. Ms. Myers would like to respond, and then Mr. Johnson.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you for coming down here and raising the issue of the homeless, and I think your question is absolutely appropriate. I think it's a fair question, I think it's an important question, and a necessary question. And I would like to see this city address the needs of the homeless. One of the needs the homeless has is for mass transportation, and this city should take that issue up and discuss how at least we would participate in providing that resource. There are many other resources that need to be provided, not just to the homeless, but to poor people.
Low-income.
Low-income people. And so I think your question is fair, and I feel that it's unfortunate that we don't have an answer for you. I hope that we can eventually work on that and have an answer for you.
Maybe we'll bring it up on council in the whole. Maybe we'll get a group together. Just an idea.
Okay, Ms. Myers. Okay, Mr. Johnson, and Mr. Gerald, and Dr. Wu.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, thank you, Mr. President. If y'all can come up with a solution for this, I think you can share it with the world, because I think this is a worldwide problem. And I would encourage you to, why don't you do a little research, and you email us with a solution. You can do a little research, go to other municipalities and other cities and see how they're dealing with it successfully, and then share that information...
Cincinnati, you know, are there public schools that are empty because they were old or whatever? They actually turned them in.
Yes, ma'am. But anyhow, if you would, find out, you know, the solution, the best solution.
I will bring that to you.
If you share that with us, we'll share a look at it. Thank you very much.
And regarding those schools, ma'am, is, I think the school board would be the appropriate place. We've tried to work with the school board on reuse of several school properties to no avail, but so...
That would be wonderful.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll look forward to that response from you, ma'am. Thank you very much. We'll look forward for your solution to this problem. Thank you.
Mr. Gerald, and Dr. Wu.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I agree with Mrs. Myers that the question deserves an answer. I don't think it's something that we can sidestep or avoid. We must face it head-on and see if we can find a solution. But to, and I agree with your comments, to attempt to continue to dismiss it, so to speak, and pretend that it's not a problem. It may not be a problem for those of us who have places to live, but it is a problem not only for the homeless, but also for the city of Pensacola. As we try to revitalize the downtown, the park is up and running baseball games, we have visitors coming to town, and we want to, we don't want that to be a problem. And in order to avoid a problem in the long run, it is my belief that it's necessary that we address it. And the idea of putting together, we form committees for everything else, to do studies and look at it and bring back recommendations, and this issue deserves a committee to look at it. And as far as other groups, I would certainly invite them to participate with you, because what impacts the homeless in the city and where they are located impacts the rest of the city, and that's really all there is to it. But whatever the council comes up with, if it's something we need to have on the committee of the whole, I'll take that up in new business, and we need to look at whether putting a committee together to study the problem and see what solutions we can find.
Okay, we discussed that like four months ago, about getting a committee together, and nothing has been done.
Well, I would be in favor of putting it on the committee of the whole, and we need to find a solution.
I'll be there.
And move forward, rather than attempting to avoid the issue and just wait until it blossoms into a problem that we have to deal with right away. So I look forward to our session this evening on, under new business, to make sure that this council gets involved and address the situation before it becomes a bigger problem. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Wu.
Thank you, Mr. President. As Councilman Johnson said, I wish we were smart enough to be able to give you an answer on what the solution should be, but I do believe that it requires individuals to become involved. You asked a question, what have we done? And I can't speak for anyone else, but I can tell you, for five years, I cooked breakfast at Lowe's and Fisher's on a weekly basis. I can tell you, for 15 years, I rang the bell for Salvation Army, and I can tell you that I've worked on over 20 habitat for humanity homes. And if I was smart enough to know the solution, there would be no more homes to build and no more bells to ring, but it's above my intelligence level. But you can't make this...
If you looked around, there is a lot of foreclosed homes, there's a lot of city property owned that we could house the homeless in.
Right.
But nobody is taking the time, the trouble, or the interest.
Well, I think, I don't know if that's completely true. Man for Humanity, for example, Man Food Bank, I know have taken empty lots and they're growing vegetables and a lot of...
Oh, we have. Occupy was given a lot with manna. We are growing vegetables so we can feed the hungry and the homeless.
Well, that, and I think that's all part of the solution, but, you know, to make the assumption that we're not doing anything, I don't know is a very correct one, but I...
And only seeing what I see.
Right, but as Councilman Johnson aptly said, you know, if we knew the answer to this, we would probably be crowned the smartest people on earth.
There you go.
Councilman Hall, I don't mean to put him on the spot, I was talking about my good deeds, he has taken people in his house that have no...
Welcome to my world.
He had no food, and he's fed them. But he's never, to my knowledge, ever sat here and said that he did that. I happen to know that he did do that.
No, he did sit here about four months ago and told us about the story, and it was wonderful.
Right.
And I commend him. I commend everybody who wants to do something.
As Councilman Johnson says, if you have some suggestions, we're more than happy to hear them.
And I will be more than available.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Again, thank you for hearing it. Please, open your eyes.
Mr. Townsend has, wants to make a war.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think you can be assured that all of us are really sensitive to this issue. I don't think any of us up here are not sensitive to this issue, that it's something that is happening all over the United States. I don't feel that friction among us is going to eradicate the problem. There are significant agencies that are doing something. Right across the street, which I am a part of, and which you know about, is St. Joseph Church over there. We have caring and sharing, we have a medical clinic, we have a soup kitchen, and it goes on at least two or three times a week. We even put a portable toilet across the street for your use, and you know about it because I...
Okay, that's for my use, I have a home and bathroom. Thank you.
Understand that, but I'm telling you that the city, which we are part of the city, and all of us here are sensitive to this, maybe, Mr. President, this could be an excellent item to go on our strategy committee meeting for the discussion. But I think to take care of this problem, friction is not going to help us. We need to get together, sit down, and try to come up with a plan of action to deal with it, because we have folks feeding down here at this park down here, we're feeding over here twice a week, we got this medical clinic, and you'd be amazed how many folks that come over here.
I do know. I have watched the numbers.
Okay, you've seen them over there, and you probably have seen me over there, I don't know whether you have or not.
Yes, I have.
But the point is, we are sensitive to this, and it's something that we have to deal with.
Yeah, I'm not trying to cause friction, but I am just trying to bring your memory back up. I believe it was three or four months ago when we shared our stories about the homeless. And at one point in time, they were, we were going to get together a panel, discuss it. It did not happen. I'm just asking, this time, can we make something happen? I've got, you know, if you look out, we've got people wandering around here because the waterfront mission is closed.
What of the waters? Thank you, Ms. Myers. Okay, and Mr. Jeffrey Hunter. Good evening, sir.
Good afternoon. I'm Jerry Hunter at 1-822-St. Catherine's Avenue here in Pensacola, and I wanted to ask this council to consider keeping the West Side Branch Library there on Savante Street. And I know that the ball is way down the road. I went to a planning meeting about the, with the architect, this past week, or last week, and it was a wonderful concept, and I thank those who voted on the new community center for Legion Field, a great idea, and is to be commended for the work, and I think Mr. May, Lumen May, is doing a wonderful job there. Some form of library and reading center is needed at all community centers. As a matter of fact, I noticed that at Sanders Beach, there is a community reading room slash library where they have donated books and that sort of thing. So a wonderful concept to have some form of learning there during the recreational period. But the West Side Branch Library is a cultural hub here in Pensacola. I pastor a small church, and learning, wisdom, and knowledge is the essence of who I am. I'm a book reader. My children and my grandchildren go to the West Side Branch Library. And we've been a part of cultural activities in trying to get other black Americans to go to the West Side Branch Library and participate in reading and learning. And when I passed by there, that center there on Savante Street is a vivid reminder to those in that community that learning and intelligence, wisdom, and knowledge should be one of the essence of a community. And keeping that branch library there and building a bigger and better library would be a wonderful thing and a great message from this council that says, we want an intelligent community at large. There's no other center in Pensacola that the city funds right now, along with the county, that says we believe in learning. There's nothing that I know of from a city of Pensacola point of view, and I would beg y'all to please, please, consider not closing that branch library down. It's a standalone entity, as I said earlier, and when I found out that there was a proposal to move it from Savante Street, which is a wonderful thoroughfare for the public, to Gregory Street, I thought about, man, it's only like eight or nine blocks from the main library. And so not only that, most of the people that I've talked to that live over there know anything about the move, and so we are in the present form, putting together a petition to let the community at large know, and then ask for their support to, let's see if we can find some money for a bigger and better branch library. So please, I ask that you would reconsider, and I'd love to lead a fundraising effort for a bigger and better branch library here in Pensacola.
Okay, don't leave yet. Mr. Gerald, and Ms. Myers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Hunter, do you have any idea of what the level of activity is at the West Side Branch presently, in terms of foot traffic, books that are being checked out, et cetera?
No, sir, I don't, but again, if any one of you, this council would go there at any one time, there's going to be a large body of folks from that community there, and but, no, I don't have...
One of the things that I would suggest in this is that you would either contract, contact, rather, the director of the library, or the friends of the library, and see if they can have some statistics...
Okay.
...that would strengthen your petition when you go before the public to make your plea...
Okay.
...to have some background information with you that will highlight what is actually going on at that branch.
Okay.
And get in contact with me.
Yes, sir.
Thanks for being here.
Okay, Ms. Myers.
Yes, moving that library greatly concerns me, and I voted against moving that library from Savante Street. I just have very strong feelings about this. I believe it's unfair to the community over there that you represent, and I'm going to bring this up under new business because our public forum time is up, but if you want to stay around for new business, I'm going to bring it up under new business.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, please, give us a chance to raise the money. We can do it. There's enough of us out here that really care, and enough of you, I know that care. Thank you, Mr. Townsend.
Okay, and Mr. Townsend.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Ms. President. There's another meeting on the 22nd, which is next Tuesday, I believe it is, two weeks from now, at the Corrine Jones Sanders Beach Center, with the design and further discussion. I would strongly suggest that all the folks who have some interest, including City Council person Myers, who handles uptown and actually happens to be downtown, should come and see what we're planning, okay?
It's a wonderful concept, and we need it.
Yeah, we've been working real hard, we've been working real hard on this, and you need to know the background and all of these things, so we will have an additional meeting on the 22nd regarding this.
Now, was it the last meeting?
Understand.
Okay, sir. One more, Mr. Weiss.
Yes, and just very quickly, I know we need to move on. You mentioned something, you are reverent, and it made me think of something that another not-for-profit has done in partnering with the church and using their unused space, and they were able to do that and accomplish great things for the community. So as we move on and talk about in new business, maybe downsizing the existing space, but partnering with some folks in the community, whether it's private business, or churches, or something like that, and enter into that sort of thing. Because I know this is a hu- Because I know this is a huge gain in the area in Legion Field, but we also have to acknowledge the loss that Ms. Myers is talking about and actually voted against because you will be losing your library. So I look forward to hearing more during New Business.
Okay, thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, you've been provided a copy, an advanced copy, of the minutes of our last meeting. Any additions, corrections, or deletions?
Move the approval.
Charrods moved for approval.
I seconded.
Second. Okay, please vote. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. There are no awards of presentations and loses to public hearings. Proposed amendment to the Land Development Code, commercial and industrial permitted land uses. Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this point, Sherri Morris will make her presentation.
Thank you, Mr. City Administrator, Council President, members of council. This item before you is a proposed amendment to the Land Development Code pertaining to the permitted uses in all of the commercial and industrial zoning districts, the cumulative district citywide. The Planning Board has taken up this issue at a number of meetings. They also devoted a special workshop entirely to the topic in January. And then at their April meeting, they conducted an official public hearing at which they forwarded a recommendation to council. The gist of the amendment, there, you know, you have that copy in strikeout and underline format. You'll notice there are two versions. One is the version that was reviewed by Planning Board, and one is the version that was recommended by Planning Board. There's only one difference between the two documents, and that is the C2A zoning district, which that district primarily follows the DIB boundaries. It's your, generally your downtown core. The districts around the C2A are not cumulative by and large. They are either historic preservation districts that have specific lists of permitted uses, the South Palafox Business District, which has its own specific list of permitted uses, waterfront redevelopment and gateway redevelopment, which also have their own permitted uses listed. So that it's not unusual in the downtown core for zoning districts or aesthetic overlays to have a non-cumulative nature. Staff had proposed making the C2A, which includes your downtown corridor, as I say, or your downtown core, as I said, and also the Palafox corridor that goes right down the center of the downtown. We proposed making that non-cumulative, where you had very specific uses listed. That would be what is allowed. There would be no gray area. It didn't build from the RNC district to the C1 district to the C2 district, as it does now. So Planning Board wanted to leave the flexibility in place. So what they recommended is that C2A remain a cumulative zoning district and have those preceding uses permitted with the already suggested changes that staff had made as far as taking some uses and putting them in the more permissive zoning districts of C3 and the industrial district. So I know that's kind of a little muddled, but that's the only substantive difference between the two proposed amendments. You have two ordinances before you to consider. Essentially, aside from that, what the ordinance does is it creates categories of industrial intensity as opposed to specific industrial uses. Previously, our ordinance listed specific manufacturing types, what you could make. And it was so specific that a lot of developers found it problematic, that it kind of pigeonholed what you could do. We worked very closely with the chamber staff to come up with some broader language. Some of it was drawn from industrial park restrictive covenants that defined broad categories of industrial activity and the scope and the intensity of what they do. So we tried to use that. That's something that the chamber tried to vet with their membership, and I think that was pretty well received. Planning Board was very open to that, being incorporated into the industrial categories. We removed the prohibition against residential uses in industrial zoning. Currently, you can only have residential if you already have one existing in the same block. And as I said, the version that staff presented would make C2A non-cumulative with the same permitted uses that are listed in the South Palafox Business District, which is contiguous to the C2A. And the Planning Board version has that remaining a cumulative district. Because this changes permitted uses, it requires two public hearings. This won't be the only one. At your next meeting, you'll have another one. But you do have two ordinances before you. So you can recommend either of those for the next public hearing or send it back to staff for changes if you desire. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Ms. DeWes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to know any of the existing businesses. I'm thinking of the Brick Company, the Steel Company, the Heinberg Street, our port. Any of those uses, does it change any of their business models or ability to expand? Or?
Councilwoman DeWes, we did look at all those, especially with, when we were looking at our future land use map update prior to this endeavor. We looked at all of those uses in the dense business area in the C2A. And as we were changing the future land use map and taking that industrial land use category out of that area and making it commercial, all of those uses that are, you know, the Brick Company, you know, that we looked at that, we looked at all the uses on Heinberg, they all fit under the broad commercial category in future land use. And they would still fit under the C3 commercial district, which is what they will be housed in once we complete the follow-up zoning map amendments we've been working on. But those would all fit, you know, quite well into the way we've defined it within the C3 zoning district, which is wholesale and limited industry.
Okay. Is there one of these versions that is better fit for existing business, so we're not hindering their operations?
The only difference, as I said, was in the C2A. And I don't know, there might be some districts in the C2A district that would be made non-conforming. But by and large, those businesses you refer to are not in the C2A. So primarily, there may be a couple of businesses in the Palafox corridor that wouldn't be able to renew or expand, but not the longtime businesses such as the Brick Company. No, they would not be affected.
So depending on what we choose, then, if there is a district where people that are operating business right now are affected, do we make direct contact with them since they are absolutely impacted by this? Or is it simply by notice in the newspaper?
We notice in the newspaper, and if council does choose one option or the other, like I said, there are very limited businesses that would be impacted, and we could contact them directly prior to the second public hearing.
I think that would be prudent on council's part to ask for that because, you know, I wouldn't want to be a business owner that finds out after we've taken action that it's impacted.
Correct.
So, Mr. President, whenever we end up with choosing, I guess we would need to add that at that time. Thank you.
Very well, thank you. Dr. Pratt.
Thank you, Mr. President. We all received a communication from a citizen with questions about several items, and he wasn't going to be able to be here tonight. And one of his questions was one that I noted as well, that there's a line about in the industrial, the manufacturing uses of a scale and intensity likely to be capable of producing sound, et cetera, that's incompatible with the general commercial district. I know we've had adventures about the downtown noise ordinance, just with restaurants and bars, sort of. How do we deal with the nebulous nature of something like that, or is there other recommendations out there?
Councilwoman Pratt, when, in dealing with the chamber directly, when we came up with that language, the preference that was communicated to us was that broad was better in that, as I said, you weren't kind of pigeonholing development into one specific, you know, you make toys, you make this, you know, because that's how our code currently reads. The thinking was that if a business wanted to demonstrate, if there was some sort of nebulous gray area where it was a judgment call on the part of staff, or if it came to the point of an appeal where they went to the zoning board to appeal a staff decision if they were denied a land use, the intent was that a business or industry type would be able to demonstrate per their, you know, business model or, you know, records that they had as far as historical evidence of their operations, that they did not create an excessive impact on adjacent properties. And as I said, I mean, we looked very closely at the businesses along Heinberg, because we know they have the railroad spur there. There's, you know, there's a number of areas that are conducive to a more intensive commercial activity, wholesale, warehousing, and limited manufacturing. And as long as they're not having a negative impact on the properties next door, we wanted to facilitate that type of use. And the chamber was very helpful in coming up with language. And as I said, I think the indication we got was that keeping it broad was, it aided in flexibility for businesses.
I guess it's something that eventually it might be questioned, and we'll have to clarify it, because I foresee someone saying, but they rumble along, and it's bothering my sleep, and let's get rid of it. And who was the right person who thought that this wasn't obnoxious? But next question I had, I noticed that we eliminated from downtown car rental agencies. And we earlier spoke of people without transportation. And it's not just the poor, it's also urban people. And I've had plenty of time being a transportationally challenged person, where there are times as a urban person, owning a car doesn't really make sense, but you want access to renting cars. And I was wondering, primarily, there are the zip cars or other sort of car-sharing, rental kind of things that are in other cities. We don't have it yet. But would eliminating car rentals from the downtown area prohibit something like that, which would be an attractive thing in an urban area?
Councilwoman Pratt, I think we could work with a business such as that. What this particular elimination was, was the large-scale sea of concrete where they have an asphalt parking lot and numerous cars mimicking essentially, you know, car sales or something of that nature. And we excluded it from the downtown core, where it didn't make sense in such an urban environment to want that kind of sprawling asphalt use that it typically is. I don't think that would preclude what you're suggesting. I think that those types of businesses don't quite fit that particular mold, and we would be able to work with that.
Okay. And finally, I guess this is a structural question. Usually, I feel like we get the recommendation from the Planning Board, and it's unusual to me to, maybe it's not, it's just we haven't seen this, where there's a staff recommendation and a Planning Board recommendation. Is that typical? Is there a sense that the staff isn't recommending what the Planning Board recommended, or you're just showing us the full process?
It was such a policy decision. Usually, whatever the Planning Board recommends, you know, if there's minor differences, we just forward you the version that the Planning Board recommended. This was a pretty significant policy shift. You know, there have been concerns in the past about land uses on the Palafox corridor. For example, the downtown core has been undergoing a revitalization. Questions arise all the time about, you know, what's compatible in our downtown environment. So it was such a policy shift to choose either to let it remain cumulative or go to the non-cumulative format, that we just wanted to let council make that call and know that, you know, Planning Board, that was the one thing they wrestled with. And in the end, they opted to omit that. But there was a great deal of discussion about that and the merits and, you know, the drawbacks to that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, Ms. Morris, I was wondering, proposed amendment to the LDC, what triggered this action tonight, bringing this before us? Is there a specific person, business entity, that needed some special considerations? What triggered this action?
Councilman Johnson, we've been actually looking at this for, unfortunately, it's been years since we've been looking at it, and it's just now winding its way through the process. It's something that's been ongoing. And, you know, as council is very aware, I mean, land uses pop up from time to time that kind of draw attention to the need to revamp the code. But there's nothing specific that triggered or initiated this process. This is something that's been ongoing for a number of years now. And the Planning Board had just finished the update of the comprehensive plan, and this got backburnered a little bit until that process was completed. But now that we updated our future land use map and we started the process of changing the zoning map to mirror what the future land use map now says, the issue of permitted uses came up again because some of the property owners, the Heinberg example again, some of the property owners along Heinberg, when we started talking about changing the zoning map to reflect what the future land use map now says, which would take them from industrial to commercial, they knew that we were in the process of changing our permitted uses. And they said, how can we know if we support the zoning map amendment until we know what the permitted uses in that district are going to be when you're done? So this process got, kind of stepped up the ladder a bit. So we could take this, take the question mark out of what the zoning categories would allow, and then we could proceed with the zoning map amendments that we have to complete based on our future land use and comp plan update.
So there's no specific reason, there's no business out there that's trying to move into this area or anything that we, that might be kind of on the drawing board?
Not that I'm aware of that's triggered any of this. This has been ongoing with myself personally for a couple of years now, that we've been working on this with the Planning Board.
Thank you, Ms. Morris. And thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Morris, in the past week, there was something came out, and they had some suggestions or some comments by ECUA and on the school board that they had some concerns about some changes. Does this address that, those issues?
Councilman Townsend, this does not, it would only impact those areas and those properties in the fact that they would still have the underlining zoning categories that currently exist. If we did put the overlay district in place, the maritime redevelopment district, the zoning that is underneath that overlay would still apply. And so the permitted uses in all zoning districts citywide that have these particular commercial and industrial land use categories would be affected.
Okay, well, specifically, you mentioned the DIB boundaries. Could you just share with us any specific changes as a result of what's going on here that will take place if this action is approved?
If the action is approved within the DIB boundaries, it would be the staff version that we submitted, that Planning Board originally reviewed. If that version is approved, then the, essentially, the DIB boundaries, it doesn't mirror it exactly, but it's pretty close, then those boundaries would essentially have the same list of permitted uses that are allowed generally in the South Palafox Business District, which is with south of Maine, going down Palafox, down the corridor. And I think pretty close to what the waterfront redevelopment district currently allows also, with the exception of marinas and things like that, because there's no waterfront in the C2A.
Okay. Take the treatment plant properties here, being cleared off, what would this allow to take place over there?
Well, currently, the ECUA property is owned M1, which is light industrial. So all the uses you see in that land use category, that doesn't differ between the Planning Board and staff version. That's the same. So it allows for more intense manufacturing uses. It allows for uses that have outside storage that aren't necessarily just a minor accessory component to an existing land use. That being said, the future land use map was updated in that area to change it from industrial to commercial. And so the long-range goal is to make the zoning map reflect that. So more than likely, one of the commercial zoning categories would apply. But at the current time, M1, the light industrial district affects most of that area.
Okay. How does this affect Mary Dell, who's been living over here for 50 years, 60 years, with a two-bedroom house, comfortable, and gonna wanna live there till she dies? And we changing something, how does that affect that person?
It really wouldn't affect anything for a residential person who lives in that area. They would already be a permitted use because they're existing. This doesn't change, in fact, it increases the opportunity for residential uses to exist in the M1 category. There's no design standards or any aesthetic guidelines that are being implemented by this proposed amendment. The only change to anything that could possibly be related to aesthetics is in the C3 district, which we've had, historically had issues with in the city. The screening requirement, we enhanced it. So there's a requirement for additional screening for outside storage than we previously had. So if somebody was living in a C3 district and wanted to live there till they died, they'd probably have a better view as a result of the amendment. But it wouldn't affect them as far as their use or their continued use of their property.
Thank you, Ms. President. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Wu.
Councilman Townsend's questions were so good, he answered my questions in the process. Thank you, Ms. President.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gerald.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'd like to say hello to Councilman Wu because Mr. Townsend did address a couple of questions that I had. But I have something that's a little bit different and that is, what are the planned reuse for the ECUA property? Are there any restrictions on when it can be used and what it can be used for?
In this proposed amendment or any of the other amendments we've discussed that would impact that site, there are no restrictions as to the proposed use.
Would it be available for residential use as soon as it's properly cleared?
If the amendment is passed, because it is M1, there's not residential use existing in the block currently, so it wouldn't be allowed. If the amendment's passed, it would be allowed. I don't know as far as the environmental factors, whether or not it could be developed immediately after clearing for that use, but it would be allowed but not required.
Okay. My last question, and this will do it for me. Was there an opportunity provided to the residents and business owners to fully participate, comment, and make decisions about the direction that this ordinance would recommend?
We had a large number of people show up to speak at previous planning board meetings. The numbers tended to dwindle as it kind of worked its way through as a discussion item. I think it went to four meetings as a discussion item and then we did have a workshop in January that was devoted solely to this topic. And we had a large number of people show up for that as well. So I think there was a good deal of public input. You know, it can be, I think zoning gets people's attention more than the future land use and comp plan issues that it seemed more broader in scope. So I think we had a pretty good turnout for public input. It's, as I said, it worked its way through probably a good six months through the planning board before making its way to you.
And finally, in your opinion, was there a groundswell of objection to the idea or?
The only objection that we got originally was from commercial property owners that were concerned about, especially given the condition of the economy, you know, what if someone wants to come in and buy or lease my property to make some widget, you know, are you going to tell them they can't? And that's when we started working with the Chamber to try to achieve a level of consensus among their membership and the larger business community to give them some comfort level that we're not trying to be obstructionist to business opportunities. We just want to make sure that we categorize them correctly so developers and business owners have some level of predictability as to what can go next door.
Thank you, Ms. Morris. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Dubison.
Good evening, council. Thank you for letting us speak. I attended, I believe, most of these meetings and I was one of the only citizens present at the last meeting. And I want to point out to council that the planning board voted unanimously when they rejected the staff proposal after an hour or more of conversation. And part of it had to do with the fact that in trying to create a climate of certainty for some business investments, there created a lack of existing opportunity or limitation in realtors and developers who were present on the board were very concerned that we might be missing job and business building opportunities by prematurely eliminating uses. There were some uses which everyone was in agreement. I believe that the amendment that they passed forward pretty much mirrors that. But I would encourage council to look at the fact that you had a unanimous vote by your citizen board that spent many hours reviewing this. And I would encourage you to consider whether you really, you know, want to override that in choosing between the two. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to do address this topic? Ms. Dewis.
Thank you. And I apologize for speaking twice. It just brought up another question, though. You've talked about this zoning change, but you've talked about the future land use map. Is there one or the other that better, completely better aligns us with our future land use? I mean, if we stayed and said, look, the planning boards had unanimously stayed with the cumulative, does that hinder the moving towards the future land use map?
Councilwoman Dewis, no, it does not. They both would be in complete conformity with the future land use maps. There would be no conflict.
Good. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Thank you. Dr. Pratt.
I was just gonna go ahead and make a motion that we approve the planning board version presented. A second.
There's a motion and a second. Any more comment? Please vote. Okay. And we get one more public hearing on this, right? Okay. All right, thank you. And 6B here, I talked to the city attorney yesterday several times about it and said I'd be the one to fall on the sword here on this one about having it added to the agenda fairly late. I was out of town for a full week and was not at the Monday meeting and did not capture exactly what the vote was. Apparently, there was some disagreement among staff members, sixth, seventh floor, on whether a public hearing was required on this or not. The reason I asked the city attorney to go ahead and add this to the agenda is because, rightly or wrongly, and I'm not sure which one it is, it was advertised as a public hearing the last time. And I expected people to show up tonight for a public hearing. And so I don't look at this as being a really late notice, just a continuation of what we did last time. If there's any heartburn on the part of the public or council on doing this, I'm willing to entertain any suggestion that you have. I don't really see a huge problem with this, either in the notification or the changes that were made. And the other reason I didn't object to the public hearing, even though the city attorney thought that possibly, or that it isn't necessary, is that, one, because it had been advertised before that it might be confusing to members of the council and the public as to why there wasn't one this time. And, two, even though on the ordinance portion of it, the public has plenty of time, opportunity to weigh in on it then, I just thought that it might send the wrong message since it had already been advertised previously. So, anyway, Mr. Reynolds requests to amend chapter 7-4 of the city code.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Morris.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator, council president, members of council. You'll recall, this was a public hearing at your last regular council meeting and it was tabled to a discussion item on this past Monday's committee of the whole meeting. The issue, as you probably recall, is that Walmart on Creighton wishes to add liquor sales to their store. And there is a requirement in the city's code in chapter seven which deals with licensing and business regulations and alcoholic beverage requirements that would not prohibit, would not permit that because there is actually a line of residential zoning running through Walmart's property to the north, if you see there. Because the requirement in our code is property line to property line, there's no conceivable way they could meet the requirements of the ordinance as it exists. That being said, there is a exemption section in the ordinance and that is in section 744 of the city code. Previously, the exemptions contained in that section were for specifically motels, hotels, or restaurants that had obtained an alcoholic beverage license pursuant to Florida statutory requirements. What Walmart has requested is that we also add multi-use, large multi-use retail stores to that exemption. Based on council's discussion at the last public hearing, the 200,000 square foot threshold was put in place also as a minimum standard. So nothing that is less than 200,000 square feet in Florida area would be able to use this exemption in your alcoholic beverage ordinance. But this is the amendment that is before you, being requested, it would allow, as I said, Walmart or any similar-sized retailer that is a multi-use, large retailer to also include liquor sales in addition to beer and wine, which is already permitted.
Okay. Ms. Dewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do support this. I think that we've looked at all the options and tried to look at the county situations that they've been able to do variances and that this is the best way to accomplish this. But I did want to ask, we've limited this to big box retailers of 200,000 square feet or more. Is there anything in there that limits within that retail space the size of the liquor sales?
There is not. An ordinance as presented, it does not limit the actual square footage of the component of the store that deals with liquor sales, no.
So is there a potential for a super liquor store within another retail space? It just dawned on me that we can't be changing it without that limitation.
I don't think that they could achieve the multi-use factor if they were trying to do just a super store dealing only with liquor. We did not get into the specifics of departments within the store, but yes, I mean, I see your point as to that. The multi-use, I think they would be hard-pressed, something that size, to meet the letter of the ordinance and not have the other clear uses be the primary.
And we'll hear this again for a second reading?
There will be a second reading at the next meeting in May.
Maybe, Mr. President, if we could have any information on other ordinances that accomplish this in other areas, if they've addressed that percentage?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Okay, so, Mr. Reynolds, if that information's available, then please share with council.
We'll do that. Thank you, sir.
Any other question? Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, thank you very much. I'm gonna be supporting this also tonight. And I was wondering if they're open tonight because if this meeting goes on real long, I might have to go by there.
That's quite a drive. Gotta wait for a second hearing.
Oh, a second hearing, okay. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions from council? I just want to point out that a Walmart representative is out here as well as council for Walmart. Anybody from the public wish to, yes, sir? And when you finish speaking, just remember to fill out the card and give it to the clerk. Okay?
Marla Mueller, 412 West Gregory. I'd like to say nine words. If you're big enough, you can do anything. Why would anybody consider, just because they're big, you would allow them to do something? What's good for one citizen is good for another. Let's see, is Walmart publicly traded? That would make it a personage, wouldn't it? If they are, I don't believe they are, I think they're private. Anyway, I would have you consider, you know, I'm with Occupy and this is exactly what Occupy is trying to get people to recognize. The difference between you guys sitting there, those guys sitting over there, and us sitting over here is that there's no difference. We're all people. Keep it in mind when you make decisions on size. I realize, yes, maybe Walmart will say, well, we'll move out to the county or whatever, like they do everywhere else when they don't get what they want. But everything should be equal for every business owner in the city. Every person in the city. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any more? Seeing none?
Leave to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clark, any cause of judicial hearings?
There are none.
Mr. Reynolds, mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, Mr. Dick Barker will give the financial, monthly financial report.
Are you doing this twice a month?
No, sir. I'm not doing it twice a month. This is for the month of April. Last time I did it for the month of March.
Okay.
And you got a double whammy because you got the six-months report at the committee of the whole and then you received this at the council meeting. So this will be the month for April and then I'll follow up in June for the May.
All right. All right, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds, Mr. President, members of city council. For our revenues, they continue the same picture if you've seen in the past, they continue to be down in each of the areas. Franchise fees, public service taxes are down and continue to be down about $900,000. Half-cent sales tax is down about $85,000 and communication services tax about $70,000. And then the revenue sharing, and that's a typo for the six months, six months of collection, is still down 1.27, it's up 1.27%. So in total, we're down about $1,050,000 and we still have expenditure savings that will offset that when we do the resolution, probably during the fourth quarter of the year. Local option sales tax is down about 2.6% or $81,000 and the local option gasoline tax is also down about 8% or $63,000. Your balances for the trade planning trust fund is $682,745 and part purchases trust fund is $38,068. And then, of course, the mayor's office is continuing to work with the unions as it relates to the pension issue and those issues will be brought forward later during the year. For our contracts, the first contract is contract renewal and extensions. And this, the first one is with Shoretail, which is the city's phone service that we have, and that is for telephone support and maintenance. It is not an SVE and it was done through direct negotiations and the contract for that was Contract renewal and extensions continued. It was Technology Integration Group and that was from Computer Network Devices. It is not an SVE. It was purchased through the State of Florida contract, off of that contract for $30,411. And then direct negotiations and you will see three of these, the sidewalk projects were broken into three phases. The first one was Roper &amp; Roper, general contractor. It's an SVE. It was through quotations and it was for $69,000. The next phase, phase two, was Waters General Contractors, SVE quotations for $64,839. Waters General Contractor also for phase three was purchase quotation and it was for And then One Source Lawn Service for mowing and landscaping maintenance at the airport was quotation for $31,467. State and federal contract purchases off the State of Florida contract for notebook computers for the police department was $46,200. Highlight Marketing Incorporated runway painting services, State of Florida contract for $93,850. And Metal Craft Marine Incorporated was for a boat for the fire department at GSA contract price of $601,188. And this was funded through Port Grant. And then just to remind council of the budget schedule, still on target to deliver the proposed budget June 11th to council. And then our first public hearings will be September 5th, September 12th, and the workshops will be July 23rd through 25th. And with that, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. President. I noticed in my package tonight, I didn't have an organizational chart. Ms. Dewis brought up Monday that that should be part of all budget and I thought that was a great point. So I was wondering, did we not have that tonight, Mr. Reynolds? Do you know if that's, and the organizational chart and job descriptions for?
Well, you need to address the chair, though.
Okay, I'm sorry. Mr. Hall?
Okay. Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wasn't aware that there was a timeline, Councilman Johnson, but I can assure you that we can get that for you. And I will also say that you can see both the job directions, excuse me, job descriptions for both me and Mr. Asmar on the website.
Oh, was that recently posted?
No, sir. It's been there for probably at least five months.
Is that also with Mr. Asmar, does that also detail that he can draw leases up and order appraisals and those type things?
Mr. Asmar is the special projects individual. He does, much as I do, what the mayor determines that we should do.
Right. I might have a problem with voting for the budget this time unless we get a more detailed description of his job description. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Reynolds?
No, sir. Thank you.
Ms. Myers.
Yes, Mr. President. I would like to know how many departments we have, the names of those departments, and who is the head of each department. I wonder if we could have that information when we get the organizational chart.
Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. President. In the budget that was passed by this body, you actually have a breakdown of all the organizational charts in that budget. When they have the new budget come in, there will be some changes to that organizational chart. It reflects the melding of certain departments, but ultimately...
It reflects the melding of certain departments, but ultimately, that's part of the budget process and part of the budget workshops that this organization will have the opportunity to review.
Okay. Does that take care of you?
Is, Mr. Reynolds, are you saying that the organizational chart we had last year has changed and will be reflected in the new budget?
What I've said is that the current structure of the government is what is outlined, with some exceptions, on the, in the budget book that this organization passed. In this next budget cycle, there are some consolidations that the mayor is recommending in the organization. Just off the top of my head, those will include having engineering services become part of Public Works, and there's also some talk in regards to the role of libraries and having them under Neighborhood Services. So, but that'll be something that comes before this body as part of the budget, you know, as we move forward, the recognition is, and as Mr. Barker said, we've got a deficit, a projected deficit of over $1 million. The way we're addressing those deficits is by finding efficiencies in the organization, which does include consolidation. So, you know, again, that's going to be part of the budget process, and which this organization will have the opportunity to fully vet.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Pratt's going to be next. Before we go on, look, I don't want to be hard-nosed about this, and, you know, Robert's rule says that you do address the chair and not individuals directly. I'm not sure that I want to enforce it, but if I see where it's getting confrontational between two, whether it's between two council members or member of council and the public or mayor staff in council, I just ask that the tones, you know, not be confrontational. I'm not sure that I always know it when I hear it, but sometimes I sense it. Dr. Pratt?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I will ask you that, a while back, I asked for an update on, following up on Councilwoman Myers' question about the departments. The Housing Department has been without a Housing Department head for some time, and I had asked for an update on the process for that and where we're going, because that's a very important department, and so I hope we can have an update on that in the near future. And also, in response to your question about the number of departments, et cetera, I think that it would be nice for our attorney to help us understand what a department is and how that fits within the charter, because I think that that's a little bit of the concern, is what a department is versus a bureau, division, group of people who want to do something, whatever, and what our responsibility is within the organizational structure of the government. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Deweese?
Thank you, Mr. President. I did have a question with regard to the org chart as well, having to do two things, actually, with MIS. I understand from a citizen that that has been classified now as a division and not a department, and I'm concerned about that, because MIS has, more than certainly in this era of technology, become one of the most important parts of our entity, and really any entity that wants to survive in this environment. So I don't see the budget decreasing and the need for MIS decreasing and for it to go from a department to a division. I'd like to understand that. And also, you know, per the charter, we do have the, one of our rights is to approve the department heads, and we had this discussion last year, and we don't have a policy in place, as far as I know, about when we will actually have that opportunity when a department head is chosen, if it's an annual thing that we do in conjunction with the budget being approved or the presentation of the proposed budget. But I would think that that would be an important topic for council to take up at this time, so there is no confusion if we choose to have it be an annual consideration or a consideration on case by case when a department has, is appointed. So I don't know if we need to bring that up during new business, or if I can just bring it up from the floor during the Committee of the Whole next time. Thank you.
Well, I've got four different things under new business already, so I guess we could have it as a fifth. Okay, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, thank you very much, and I appreciate it. Mr. President, I guess I'd direct this to you then. I was wondering if, you know, I hear that we have now a $1 million deficit, that we're looking at that in the future, and I was wondering if this council has the ability, and I'm not sure, I was reading some of the Pensacola Charter 4.01 about the mayor's duties, and maybe someone can help me with this, the city attorney, Mr. President, but I was wondering about if we identify a line item on the budget that we feel maybe could be looked at to help with this $1 million deficit, do we have the power to take that line and adjust it, and if we get a majority vote on council?
It's my understanding that we do, but I'll defer to the attorney on that.
Thank you, Mr. President, Councilman Johnson. If I understand the question correctly, you're asking whether or not council has the ability to line item veto the budget? And I would say as a working hypothesis that you do.
Okay. So if we identify a part of the budget that we think's heavy, that we have the ability to veto that? Okay. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
And I wouldn't look at it so much as a line item veto. Where I'm drawing my position from is that the budget really is a function of council, and so it really is our budget. The mayor presents us something to work with. These are the things that he desires. Now, what he, my understanding also is, is that he can line item veto the budget we give him, but when he gives us that budget, that's really a starting place for us, you know? Okay. But anyway, Ms. Myers?
Well, I have the charter here with me. The budget is one of the enumerated powers of the city council. Even though the mayor has a line item veto power, that can be overridden by the city council. Am I correct about that, Mr. Attorney?
Councilwoman Myers, you're correct. A veto may be overridden by an affirmative vote of at least six council members.
Okay, so ultimately, the final say is ours, even if the mayor should veto one of our line items that we approve. Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, is that it, Mr. Reynolds? I believe for the second time?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Council Communications. Ms. Deweese?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to very quickly share a special event that happens annually here in our city, and it is the memorial to the fallen officers that is held over at the police station. And there's a couple of special things that happened this year. Mr. Edward O'Brien Purcell, who died in line of duty on August 12th, 1944, was recognized today. He until yet had not been recognized, and through some research at the police department, and I believe with the family members, he was now acknowledged today. And one of the special things about it is that there was about 15 to 20 family members that were able to attend, and it was quite a powerful piece of the ceremony. And the other thing that's special is that, and I think, you know, a lot of the officers that serve under Chief Simmons are so proud that he takes the time to write his own speeches, and every year has something new to say. And for the citizens that were not able to attend, I'd like to quickly just share a little bit of that with you, and I don't mean to embarrass you, chief. He welcomed everyone and said, "What makes a person want to be a police officer?" Perhaps it began long ago in a backyard or on a city street. Chances are, there was a policeman dressed in that unmistakable uniform of a hero, and a small child looking up wondered when it would be their turn. Later on in the speech, it says that it took courage alone is not enough to keep us safe is a belief in God and the realization that we are all called upon to give, we could be called upon to give that last full measure, and it will not have been in vain, and it will always be remembered, and that is the celebration of their effort every year. And it talks about Officer Purcell, that he joined an elite group of heroes whose requirement for membership is to make the ultimate sacrifice, that you can't be voted in to this club, and that you can't buy your way in, you have to earn it. And something that I want to share, because I sat there when he was talking about the young child, and Victor Cross is one of my friends I've known for about 18 years, and his father, Amos Cross, died in the line of duty. And when the chief was talking about this today, I thought how Victor's life changed the day that his father died and was shot in the face while responding to a domestic violence call, and that the word courage meant something totally different to Victor and his family from that day on, and his sacrifice for this community was forever cemented in that day. And all those families that can come out and be a part of that ceremony, that's what's important that we recognize every year. So I did this last year, I read their names into the record, so the citizens that didn't hear it today can hear that, but I want you to think about, there's people that died over a century ago, but their sacrifice is no less, just because the years have passed by. There were a lot of family members there, sometimes just an elderly wife that is still living, or the youngest children that are able to come. So I'd like to read these into the record. James W.R. Gordon, September 22nd, 1889. John Yelburton, June 3rd, 1899. William Burnham, March 18th, 1906. J.D. Carter, April 4th, 1909. C.F. Bazell, March 16th, 1932. Clinton A. Green, February 26th, 1938. Archie Bowman, August 19th, 1938. Herbert Tommy Hatcher, January 15th, 1939. Edward O'Brien Purcell, August 12th, 1944. Louis J. Champa, May 27th, 1951. Curtis Neil Jones, June 27th, 1980. Amos Cross, September 12th, 1980. Stephen A. Taylor, October 19th, 1982. Glenn Rowe Austrow, February 26th, 1997. Well-served peace officer, may you rest in peace. And I just want to make sure that we all stop and say thank you, not only to the men and women in uniform, but to the families that serve with them as well. It's a huge sacrifice. We feel safe in our city, and we have them to thank for it. Thank you, Mr. President.
And thank you, Dr. Pratt.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilwoman Deweese, for speaking so eloquently on that event. It's always a nice thing, and I'm glad to have had the opportunity to go each time that I go, and it's a nice reminder to honor those who have fallen, and to remember that there are days when I don't want to come to this meeting, because it's going to be a battle, but I'm not putting my life on the line the way our officer, police officers and firefighters do every day, and so I think that it's important enough for us to thank them regularly. Another more mundane item is a reminder to the council that we need to turn in our recommendations or reviews of the council, potential council staff people, so that we can get this taken care of, and so I look forward to our next Committee of the Whole where we should be interviewing them. But don't forget to turn that information in. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gerald's?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a brief announcement, and it states, "Meet the author on May 17th, 2011, starting at 5:00 p.m. until 7:00 p.m. at Barnes &amp; Nobles at 1200 Airport Boulevard." One of my former students, who I'm very proud of, Mr. Ivan B. James, will be doing a book signing at Barnes &amp; Nobles. That will be followed by a reception starting at 7:30 p.m. at Booker T. Washington High School Cafeteria. The title of the book is "Go Get Yours." It is a motivational-type book, but it's a wake-up call to today's young generation and tomorrow's future. Future. Mr. Ivan B. James was a student of mine back in the '90s when I taught at Printwood Middle School, and the proud, he is the son of the proud parents, Mr. Drusel, Ms. Druseller, and Mr. Sam James. And in closing, I will say that among educators, we have a saying. When we see our students out there doing well, not disregarding the efforts of his parents, but when we see our students in this position, we like to stick out a chest, stick out our chest and say, "That's one of mine, I taught him everything he knows." And that's the way I feel about Ivan. I am very proud of him, as are his parents, and once again, I would invite all of you in this community, that on May 17th, starting at 5:00 p.m. at Barnes &amp; Nobles, the book would make an excellent gift for middle and high school students. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Myers?
I have several announcements, just to... First, I would like to thank the Pensacola Police Department, Chief Simmons, and all of the police officers and staff of the Pensacola Police Department who put on the Pensacola Police Department Citizens Academy. I attended, and I graduated last night. And it's an incredible, well, they gave me a T-shirt with a badge on it. I thought about wearing it tonight, I should have. I'll wear it at the next Committee of the Whole, because I am now a proud graduate of our Citizens Police Academy. It was one of the most incredible experiences, I think, of my life. I learned a lot about our police department and about law enforcement in general, and it's a very exciting academy. You learn a lot, you have a lot of fun, and we also eat a lot. And it meets, I think, about four and a half to five hours every Tuesday for six weeks, so it's very intense, and you learn all aspects of how our police department operates, and it really heightens your awareness of just how much our law enforcement personnel sacrifice to protect us, because they never know when they leave their homes to go to work, what they're going to encounter during the day and night. It's just really an awesome experience to go to the academy. I understand that there's going to be another academy in January, I think, and normally, there's a waiting list to get into the academy. The police department has not had the academy for several years. I think you've had 25 sessions over the years, and so there's not a waiting list right now. So if you want to attend the academy, you can call the Pensacola Police Department and get your name on the list, and you should contact Sergeant Donahue, and he will put your name on the list. So I just, again, want to thank the police department for all that you do to protect the citizens, the fine work you do. I am extremely proud of you, and I am proud of my certificate and my T-shirt. The other announcement I want to make is Monday, the mayor will be holding a town hall meeting at the Tryon Library on Langley. That is in District 2. Cards were sent out to the residents of District 2. I received my card today. So this will provide the citizens with an opportunity to provide the mayor with information about your concerns. That's the purpose of the town hall meeting, is for the mayor to engage with the citizens and to find out from you what your concerns are, and to address your concerns. So I urge everyone in District 2 to attend the meeting. It starts at 6 o'clock, and it's at the Tryon Library on Langley. I hope to see you there.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'll make mine quick. I also was at the ceremony today at the police department. I want to thank all of our officers for their dedication, hard work, professionalism that they offer our city. I think they do a great job. I want to thank Chief Simmons for all he does, and all the police officers out there that risk their life every day and every night when they serve this city. So I want to thank them all for their service to this city. The second thing I'd like to do also is tomorrow night at the Blue Wahoos game, our newest local hero, Bubba Watson... local hero, Bubba Watson, will be recognized and honored, and I hope to see everybody at the Blue Wahoos game tomorrow night. Bubba Watson has been a great ambassador for our area, and I hope everyone comes out. Green shirts? I'm PCW saying, everybody wear green shirts. But anyhow, just come on out to the Wahoos game if you have a chance tomorrow night. And again, I want to thank all our police officers. That's all, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Park, any petitions?
No, sir.
On the consent agenda, we had four items from Monday. And just to refresh the public on this, these are all items that passed unanimously in the Committee of the Hall on May 7th. The first item, A, Audit Selection Committee. Item B, Code Enforcement Board Request for Lean Reduction, 3500 Wellington Road. Item C, Code Enforcement Board Request for Lean Reduction, 1822 East Marino Street. Item D, Property Acquisition, T 5600, College Heights Subdivision. With your pleasure.
Move the approval. Second.
Motion and a second. Comments? Please vote. That passes unanimously. On Committee of the Hall, there's two items. The first one, A, Creating Section 11-4-181 of the City Code Regulating Off-Street Parking During Special Events. That City Council adopts Section 11-4-181 of the City Code to require the owners of ancillary temporary parking lots used during special events to obtain a permit for such activity and to conform to reasonable regulations. The motion passed 4 to 1. Councilmember Townsend dissented, and Councilmembers Johnson, Pratt, and Spencer were absent for the vote.
Move the approval. Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Public? Sing none? Please vote. And that passes 6 to, is that 6 to 1? Okay. All right, thank you. 6 to 1. Item B, Lease with First City Arts Alliance, Inc., Doing Business As Belmont Arts and Cultural Center. That City Council authorized the mayor to lease the city-owned Long Hollow property on Republic Worksite to First City Arts Alliance, Inc., doing business as Belmont Arts for the purpose of creating an arts and cultural center on the property and making improvements to the existing structures. Further, the lease shall include language addressing persons with disabilities in the equal opportunity provisions. That motion passed 7 to 1. Councilmember Gerald's dissenting.
Move the approval. Second.
There's a motion and a second. We have one speaker from the audience that would like to address this. I just wanted to see if there's anybody from council that wanted to go first. Mr. Gerald's.
Well, at the end of your conference, your comment, you said you wanted to go first. However, I will yield to the speaker in the audience, and then I'll go next or last.
Okay, that's fine. Ms. Stephanie Taylor. Is that your posse with you out there?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, it is. If I could just briefly have everyone in support of this lease, please stand. And I won't engage the council in further repetitive persuasive argument. We have covered this thoroughly on Monday. I'm merely here to answer any questions that any of you may have, as well as to thank you for your consideration and support of what we feel is a wonderful cultural and economic opportunity for the city. This opportunity for an art district that we have been missing will provide such an opportunity to bring business, people, tourism to this city, and we're very excited about it. I also had a memo handed out to everyone, which I won't talk about all of those issues. It's one page, and it merely addressed those issues that were brought up Monday night. We have made the changes to the lease to include that there will be no discrimination against those with disabilities, and we do apologize for that oversight. That was certainly an oversight, and I think that has been done to the satisfaction of the council. Also, we addressed the issue about ensuring that the Belmont de Villiers neighborhood continues to revitalize. We have been a real partner there for the past 12 years, and unfortunately, our needs have outgrown the space that we're in, and the property which we're seeking to lease better suits the needs that we have. The only other issue that was brought up was the renaming of the center, and we're certainly willing to reconsider that. If for any reason the Belmont de Villiers area feels it's inappropriate for us to continue that, we're certainly get together and want to continue partnering with them. But I'm primarily here for questions, and, Mr. President, I know you didn't have the opportunity to be there Monday, so if you have any, I'd be happy to address those.
Okay, all right. And thank you for that. Please stay close by. Mr. Gerald's.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I want to make it perfectly clear before my comments that I have no objection to your desire to relocate. That was not my concern on Monday. However, my concern on Monday was the fact that in your efforts to move, you would include moving the name Belmont with you. And I do have a copy of the letter that was left here at my place earlier this evening, dealing with the fourth paragraph in the letter, renaming the art center. The art center has played a central role in eliminating the negative stigma associated with the name Belmont. There being such a negative stigma associated with the name Belmont, it makes me wonder why you want to take it with you. That's number one. Number two, it goes on to say that that stigma has been replaced with the vision of a vibrant and creative neighborhood core. And for the last 35 years that I've been in Pensacola, that's exactly what it has been, a vision, and little else. We are committed, or we commit, to working with the city and the Neighborhood Association to transition the art center's name in a manner that does not diminish any of what has been accomplished. And if you've accomplished something positive, one would think you would want to stay there and continue those efforts. And finally, we do have concerns about another entity using the name Belmont Art Center. And I'd like clarification on that. It says someone else that would like to use, you mean, the name has the negative stigma, but it is so popular that not only do you want to take it with you, but others want to come in and use the same name of the negative stigma that exists around that neighborhood. And by the way, I grew up in that neighborhood, and I was just wondering, where does this negative stigma come from? Is it negative to whom? I don't know. Can't answer that. But in any case, I want to point out that sometimes when we are attempting to convince, persuade, or otherwise move people to go your way or to move along with you, we sometimes step on the line in our efforts to convince. And some of those comments were kind of offensive to me, and as I said, I grew up in that neighborhood. I have no, and I'll repeat, I have no problem with your desire to move. My concern is taking the name with you. And if you could leave the name behind, if it was negative then, it's negative now, or has it cleared up? But there are a lot of things that I believe, if the positive efforts, your efforts have been so positive, I would first look and say, "Well, wait a minute. If that's it, you want to stay." And it makes me wonder whether or not the name Belmont is associated with your grant, or does that strengthen your grant? Or is there some way you can leave the name where it is, and when you get to Long Hollow, come up with your new name? I have no problem with that at all.
I don't think that we have, Mr. President.
Yeah, that's fine. Go ahead.
Thank you. The issue isn't that we don't want to stay. The issue is that the space where we are does not meet our needs. There's issues with safety. We can't get permits for plumbing for things that we need as an art center, the safety of the roof. And the owner of the building, a private owner, Reverend Powell, has talked with us and given us his blessing to go. We just don't have the space anymore. It's not a desire to leave the Belmont de Villiers neighborhood at all. And in fact, I believe where we're still going, I've been told, is actually part of the Belmont tract. So, we're still in the Belmont area. We're certainly happy to talk with the Belmont de Villiers area. After Monday, I spoke with Mrs. Curry, and she said she wanted us to still hopefully try to partner with them, and that's what we'd like to do, maybe a satellite. But we need an art district here to develop Pensacola, to bring more economic opportunity here, to bring people here, you know, the live-play-work theme that we have. We need an arts and cultural district, if you will, to have that. And the parcel where we are, we don't own it and don't have control of it, and nor does the city. We need a much bigger area to really work on developing an arts district. And we're happy to stay with the Belmont, you know, area and work with everyone there. And we'll certainly discuss changing the name. I think we're doing business as that, but that is something we certainly are willing to do.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I too have met with Reverend Powell, and he has shared with me the same concerns that you just indicated, that he has no problem with it, and neither do I. But my concern is simply about the name itself. And that is where my objection was on Monday, Monday, in Committee of the Hall, and that is where it remains today.
All I can tell you, and certainly it would require a vote on our board to change that name, but all I can tell you is we are willing to sit down with the Belmont de Villiers neighborhood, their board, and discuss that with them, and come up with a reasonable solution, and I'm sure that we will.
Mr. President? Well, and as indicated by a couple of members that were here on Monday, Ms. Curry that you mentioned, and Vivian Lamont, they expressed no objections to the move, and neither do I. I want to make that clear. That's not my interest. And since I grew up in that neighborhood, you know, when I look at this, you know, the writing is subject to interpretation by the reader. And when I looked at this, and my brain operates mostly on the left side, and I'm going, "Well, heck, there was a lot of more negative stigmas in Pensacola, period, that haven't been eliminated." And I'm going, "Whoa, it's been replaced? Okay, if we clear that up." But I don't want to go into all of that. And if your board is willing to meet, vote, change the name, do whatever it is you need to do, I have no problem with you moving whatsoever. But it's a matter of, and that negative stigma that was created in the '70s and through the '90s, it's longer than that. Much longer.
Yes, sir, and I do apologize for that language, and do accept that that can be offensive. I think what I was trying to convey to address that concern of yours is that there, it seems that the Belmont de Villiers area has sometimes been overlooked. And again, as a 501(c)(3), we can't bear that entire burden to help revitalize it. We'd like to, but I think what we are trying to address is that it's always overlooked, and why is that? Is that some negative reason? And we'd like to see it be revitalized as well.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
As long as you have indicated that your board would be willing to look at it, and I won't fight such a simple concern. It's not a simple concern, but it's something that for more than 65 years I have been familiar with. In fact, I was in that area this past Monday evening after Committee of the Hall. But it is obvious to me that the move, as a 7 to 1 vote existed on Monday, it's almost what we call a done deal. And if moving will give you more space, more opportunity, I have no concerns and no problems with that at all. But it's a matter, and again, I'll say, it's the name game that we're playing here, and I would like to see Long Hollow come up with a name and represent itself in a different way. But if there's anything in that concern that you expressed about other groups may want to use the name the Belmont Art Center, it's kind of, it's a concern to me, and I will continue to feel that way because of my association with the neighborhood.
I can assure you.
And what it really means.
I can assure you, we will meet with the Belmont de Villiers Neighborhood Association and speak with them about that, to see what their primary concern is, since it's their area, and the name Belmont is from that area. We will meet with them, and as a board, meet and come up with something that is acceptable to the Belmont de Villiers.
Yes, and I do understand that my one little no vote won't stop the show. So, at this point.
Thank you. We do appreciate it.
Yeah, at this point, I just wanted to make sure that my issues and concerns were understood and addressed. And, Mr. President, I'll probably change my vote and go along with this business and let them move. One vote won't stop them. So, it's a done deal, so let's move forward. Thank you very much.
Very well, sir. Thank you. Ms. Myers, do you want to let Ms. Dubois speak?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, council. As many of you know, I'm an arts enthusiast. From my first day here in Pensacola, I knew of the Belmont Art Center. And some of my primary involvement in this community was going back and forth to the Belmont, visiting with artisans, and with the owner of the building at that time, Neil Richards, who I believe deserves a lot of credit for the great improvement that has occurred in the Belmont de Villiers area. And in answer to Mr. Gerald's comment on Monday, I had already planned to rise and thank him for raising the question of the name, but also to caution all of us that we need to see this as a dynamic relationship, a fluid relationship of growth of the arts in this community, and I celebrate it. I don't believe anyone has worked more diligently with Reverend Powell to bring about the use of that building for the community than I have, because I sat and held hands with he and Neil through a three-month process of them trying to figure out how that building could remain open and viable to this community, and how the art center, which was in that moment a tenant of that building, could remain. There were considerable issues in the moment that Reverend Powell and his group, Truth for Youth, bought the building in June of 2010. And many of those issues have resolved themselves through organizational maturity, through firm, patient guidance by a very wise individual who has stuck his neck and his organization's neck out in service to the community. Belmont de Villiers is a creative, wonderfully heritage part of this community that deserves recognition of itself on its own, an authentic heritage that the community of Pensacola should proudly support. And while the artisans of the center know that I love them and their work, they need, for their purposes, to be elsewhere. And it is this exact lack of sensitivity which in moments occurs from people who are not regularly involved in the neighborhood that sometimes causes the confusion which ends up being perceived as conflict, when really it's just a lack of information. The question of the name of the DBA of First City Arts Alliance is not of such great concern to those who I've spoken with in our Neighborhood Association, as was the listing on your agenda of the creation of the Belmont Arts District. Make no mistake, the Belmont Arts District exists, and it exists in the neighborhood of Belmont de Villiers. The Belmont Arts and Cultural Center and the Belmont Youth Band were born in the Belmont Arts District. If they choose to reflect that, I would have no problem. But I would have a problem with Long Hollow becoming the Belmont Arts District, because Long Hollow is Long Hollow. And I think that it's a wonderful marriage of the arts that were there and the arts that are looking to move there. I would tell you that we have artists who will be remaining in the Belmont building. There is a clearly articulated vision. There is a clear process by which other artisans have the opportunity to move forward. The issue, as in everything, is dollars. And you, as a city, did not find money to help us to preserve the structure of the Belmont building during the 10 years, 12 years, however many years the art center was in the building before Reverend Powell and his group took it over, nor have you since then. And there have been opportunities, but we have not had support of either this administration, the previous administration, or some of the cultural groups who are now stepping forward to help with the move. I salute them for stepping forward to do anything in the name of the arts, because I think arts are one of the greatest unifying and equalizing elements we can bring to our community. And I will just ask you, in the future, please consider anything you can do to help bring support to the historical fiber of Belmont de Villiers, and I wish the artisans of the Belmont well. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Myers, I just want to try to get you to bring this back. This is about the subject of the lease itself, okay?
Yes, I just wanted to thank Stephanie Taylor for contacting me and letting me know that the word disability has been included in the equal opportunity provision of the lease. I am aware that that was an oversight. It was not intentional to, that that word was not in the lease. So, I'm happy that that word is included in the equal opportunity provision. I'm looking forward to the opportunities persons with disabilities will have, to have access to an art and cultural center that will be accessible. I've had discussions with people involved in this project regarding accessibility issues, and I think this is going to be a great opportunity. and I think this is going to be a great opportunity for people with disabilities to have access to a facility of this nature. So, I just want to thank you for your efforts and calling this back again to the attention of the council to let council know that this issue with the lease has been addressed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I see no other lights on, I have no other cards. We have a motion. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Does the Vice Chair, the Community Redevelopment Agency have anything to report?
Mr. President, the CRA did not meet on Monday and that concludes my report.
Okay, sir, thank you. Madam Clerk, Item 14A, ordinances on the first reading.
Item 14A is proposed ordinance number 12-12 and ordinance to be entitled, an ordinance creating Section 11-4-181 of the Code of the City of Pensacola, Florida, creating an exemption for off-street parking regulations for permitted special events, sporting events or entertainment events to which the public or segment thereof is invited, authorizing the issuance of permits therefore, providing for severability, repealing clause providing an effective date.
Move the approval, second.
There's a motion and a second. Any comments? If there are none, please vote. That passes unanimously. 14B.
Item 14B is proposed ordinance number 13-12 and ordinance to be entitled, an ordinance amending Section 7-4-4(c) of the Code of the City of Pensacola, Florida, amending conditional use regulations, providing for severability, repealing clause providing an effective date.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Comments? Please vote. That passes unanimously. Thank you. Item 15A, Madam Clerk.
Item 15A is proposed ordinance number 10-12 and ordinance to be entitled, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan and future land use map of the City of Pensacola, Florida, repealing clause providing an effective date.
Move the approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Comments? Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Dr. Pratt is absent for the vote. And 15B.
Item 15B is proposed ordinance number 11-12 and ordinance to be entitled, an ordinance amending the zoning classification of certain property pursuant to and consistent with the comprehensive plan of the City of Pensacola, amending the zoning map of the City of Pensacola, repealing clause and effective date.
Move the approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Dr. Pratt, absent for the vote.
I'm sorry, Dr. Wu.
Okay, thank you. Item 16A, before you read that out, I just wanted to let you know that the student that made the presentation on student use of tobacco and the marketing in the City of Pensacola of candy flavored tobacco products, he was unable to be here tonight. His teacher was going to come and accept the resolution on behalf of the class, but at the last moment, she had to send her regrets and that she was unable to make it. So, after we pass this resolution tonight, you know, a really nice copy of it will be sent to them, suitable for framing. Okay, so, item 16A, please.
Item 16A is Resolution Number 15-12, a resolution to be entitled, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Pensacola, Florida urging tobacco retailers to stop the sale and marketing in the City of Pensacola of candy flavored tobacco products not covered by the FDA.
Move the approval, second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Mr. Gerald.
Thank you, Mr. President. My question deals primarily with enforcement and I'm trying to figure out if we're going to have, that the officers will have the responsibility of visiting stores that deal in these products and look around for these kinds of items? And then, once they find them, what would be the course of action?
I, Mr. Reynolds or the chief can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think there's any ability to enforce this. I think it's just we're making a statement of our disapproval of it. Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a resolution urging retailers not to sell these products. It is not a resolution or an ordinance change that would have to occur that would prohibit it.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Myers, or Mr. Gerald?
I'm good.
Okay, Ms. Myers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it's a nice resolution, but it is not a law that's enforceable. However, I'm just wondering how the merchants are going to know the feelings of this council and about the resolution. I wish there was some way we could publicize it. I see that we do have a representative from the Pensacola News Journal here. And it would be really nice if maybe we could get some mention of this in the press because it's the only way we're going to be able to let the merchants know that we have passed this resolution. And I think it's unique that a city council would pass such a resolution. So, it is a way of encouraging merchants to stop selling these products.
May I recommend to the General Counsel Lady that you write a viewpoint for the New Street Law.
Okay, that's a good idea. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. More discussion. And that passes unanimously. Under unfinished business, we have appointments to the Audit Selection Committee. There is a ballot that has been provided for us. We get to vote for one of two certified public accountants and for two of five citizens that were nominated for this. And so, let's first deal with the certified public accountant. Yes? Yes, sir.
Well, prior to starting and looking at the credentials of the CPA.
Yes, sir.
Notice that one nominee does not have the license as required and I was wondering about eligibility, about that person's eligibility. And maybe, I'm no person, but that's a concern of mine and maybe I could get a readout legally and as much as we are supposed to have a CPA on this particular board, just like they have some understanding on it.
Okay, great. Is the person doing the nominating have any knowledge or? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, first I want to say that I was overwhelmed. I sent out to my email list, I had over 40 people reply to me saying they were willing to serve and I was pleasantly surprised, but there were a lot of bankers, but very few CPAs and this person, I knew some of her background and so I asked her, are you a CPA? And she said, well, she had had a license. And because of the timing, I was getting all that information at a late date and I wasn't, I figured it was better to put her in in case she was eligible or if there were no other nominees, we could maybe waive the requirement. And, but seeing as there's another qualified candidate, I'm willing to withdraw her name.
Okay, all right, thank you. Is Mr. Scott Eckstad here? Yes, sir, would you like to speak to the council?
No, I can leave.
Okay, you look like you're shooing, sir. Anybody want to speak on Mr. Eckstad's behalf?
I'll go ahead.
Okay, Ms. Weese.
Just really quickly, in case council didn't have a chance to read, that he does have extensive experience in governmental and not-for-profit audits, so that is right up our alley for this selection committee.
Well, and as far as the council selectees, I'm living proof that you don't have to be here to have the bus run over you, so. All right. But, thank you, I think. Okay, among the citizens, we have Sherri Coats, Diane Mack, Laura McKnight, Tom Owens, Samuel Watson, and for any of that are here, I see Ms. Mack and Ms. McKnight and others, I'm not sure, but you're welcome to come up and speak on your behalf. I know there's going to be council members speaking for you as well. Ms. Myers.
Yes, I nominated Diane Mack. She was also nominated by two other council members. And so, I think that shows strong support for her on the council and our confidence in her. She certainly has the background experience being a former city councilperson. She's very familiar with budgetary matters also. I also nominated Laura McKnight and I would like to speak in her favor. She's the president of the scenic heights Neighborhood Association and also the president of the Council of Neighborhood Presidents. That's not the exact name, it's a rather long name, but it's an association of all of the council presidents. She is also, I believe, the vice president of her family business, which is McKnight and Sons, I believe. And so, she's also had a lot of business experience. She's demonstrated a great commitment to the community, to her community and the City of Pensacola as a whole through her leadership on the Association of President Neighborhood Councils. So, I strongly urge council to vote for her. I think she would do an excellent job on this very important committee. And of course, she is here to speak if council would like to hear from her and so is former Councilwoman Diane Mack.
Feel free to come up anytime, ladies, if you so desire.
I thank the council members for the nomination and just want to say that I would be honored to serve and to work on this committee to make the audit selection process fair, impartial, and congenial. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Knight.
Excuse me, I dressed like I came from hip hop class. I just wanted to say that I appreciate Councilwoman Myers nominating me. I appreciate your confidence in me and I hope that what I would bring to this process would be a new set of eyes from the perspective of just the average neighborhood citizen. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Dr. Pratt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am very pleased with the slate of candidates that we have. It's a hard one today, but I think that shows great testament for the citizens who are willing to step up. And I just wanted to share a little bit about the two individuals I nominated. First was Sherri Coats. She's the business manager at Greater Little Rock Baptist Church and I didn't include in your packet a little more information about her. She is a city resident. She has a background in finance and she had auditing experience from working with the Federal Reserve in Philadelphia. And she was, for many years, an internal auditor, general manager positions in hospitality. And I think she would be a great asset to this board. And then, Tom Owens, who is an area executive with a local bank, and I think that the knowledge he would have coming from the finance sector would be valuable on this committee and I look forward to serving with whomever is chosen. Thank you.
Okay, and thank you, Ms. Weese.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I too nominated Ms. Mack and if you hadn't had a chance to read, I did state that she has a strong, almost legendary, knowledge of the budget. I know that I could always count on former Councilwoman Mack to not only know the line item, but to have analyzed it from many different perspectives and I always trusted her judgment and think she will be a perfect addition to this committee. And I had full intention of tracking down Ms. Laura McKnight and nominating her as well. I had ideas of getting on Facebook to track her and actually, four or five times hovered close to my computer to accomplish that, so I'm in full support of Ms. McKnight as well. Thank you.
Okay, and thank you. Mr. Johnson.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. President. And I want to speak in favor of Mr. Owens. I have the pleasure of serving on the Operations and Audit Committee for the Community Maritime Park Associates, a committee that we have under that, and he's one of the committee members. He brings a strong financial background. I called a couple of bankers today that I knew, trying to get a bank executive on this committee. I thought it would be very well-served with one on it. Mr. Owens, I can speak for, I've had the pleasure of working with him on the Operations and Audit Committee and I think he would be a great addition. Not that any of those, I can support any of them and have looked over their resumes and they're quite impressive. But, Mr. Owens, I'd like to speak in his favor. And Ms. Mack, I've known her for a while and enjoyed serving with her and I think she also would bring unique talents to this also, so thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Wu.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. As Councilwoman Pratt so aptly said, we have an outstanding slate of candidates, which is a wonderful position to be in. I'd like to speak on behalf of Councilwoman Mack. She's known for her tenacity in looking at numbers and I think that's exactly the type of thing we need on this committee. And the other person I'd like to strongly support is Ms. McKnight. She mentioned that she was just an ordinary citizen, that's far from true. She single-handedly put together the scenic heights Neighborhood Association and has accomplished great amount of good in that district and I unequivocally support her for this position. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir. Ms. Myers.
I can just disregard my light, I didn't mean to put that on. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Mr. Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. President. I can agree with Dr. Pratt. It's always good, you get a warm, fuzzy feeling when you have such good candidates to consider. It's just unfortunate that we can't select all of them, so I nominated Ms. Mack. Needless to say, I don't need to say too much more about her because I think we will all agree that when she served her tenure during the council, she was outstanding and very knowledgeable, does her homework and really could be an asset to this group. I also nominated Samuel Watson, a gentleman who is a native Pensacolian with the fam, you and I don't hold that against him, but, it's supposed to be a joke. But he's very, very intelligent and he has in the past expressed a desire to get involved in the community and I felt this would be an excellent opportunity for him, for his involvement. And so, I encourage you to consider Watson.
Is Mr. Watson here?
No, he is not.
Okay, all right, thank you. Mr. Gerald.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I too will, I'm looking forward to supporting Ms. Diane Mack because I know of her diligence, her experience, and her expertise. Enough said about that, I've already marked my ballot. And the other individual, Mr. Samuel Watson, would give us an opportunity to have some diversity included in that group and I wish you would all give some consideration to that thought. Oftentimes, we set up committees and it moves and it, not that it is intentional perhaps, but it gives the impression that some exclusion has occurred. And I would like to see some diversity at that table because that person will be making decisions and representing a segment of our community that is frequently and often excluded from these kinds of opportunities. Thank you, Mr. President.
Before we get down to the voting for the citizens, I'd like to recommend that somebody move to accept Mr. Scott Eckstad by affirmation.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Discussion? Okay, that passes unanimously. Congratulations, sir, and thank you for being willing to serve. Okay, now, on the citizens one, I'm going to throw something out here because we do have such an excellent slate. we do have such an excellent slate, that I'd be able to give up my seat to a third citizen here, so.
You don't.
No, 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 okay.
I thought of that too, Sam.
Okay.
For myself.
All right. All right, well, you get to mark for two, and the clerk will collect the ballots, and we can move on to new business while she counts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have some remarks tonight. Councilman Johnson alluded, possibly, to the document I handed you all, and I just wanted to share some remarks about this topic with you. The last council meeting, Mr. Barker reported that the mayor had obligated the city to a $474,000 contract, that's almost a million dollars a year for three years, for branding, advertising, and public relations. That doesn't include ad placement, media buys, printing, other things like that. Of course, the city has to advertise, particularly the port, the airport ESP, that's part of the job. But part of that contract is that $240,000 a year has to come from the general fund for advertising. That's more than we've previously budgeted for all advertising, including the media buys and such. I think that's rather staggering. One advertising person I spoke to about this told me, when he saw that number, he nearly fell out of his chair. He was very surprised. Mr. Barker just gave us our financial update tonight, that we're about a million dollars behind in our budget. We're negotiating with the unions fearing the outcome of the, what'll happen with the pensions. You know, we've had the warm winter with shortfalls, with ESP and other things. Saw Chris Jones at the police thing this morning, and he said, yeah, you guys are going to be short on property values again this year. We really can't afford expenditure at this level with an out-of-town firm, with no accountability for it. How do we justify this? How do we even evaluate it? And these are questions that really should have been asked publicly, but they weren't, since this was never brought before the public in any forum. And the question that we must ask is, does the mayor, under this charter, have the authority to make such big decisions and spend that much money without the input of the council or even the citizens of Pensacola? And I don't think he does. For reference, I gave you the things that I found to be relevant in the charter, the pro-charter literature, our ordinances and our policies. To help you understand what all of the moving parts that are being referenced are, the charter provides the mayor with a line item veto, as Councilman Johnson mentioned. And I believe that that implies that he'll be held to a budget at a line item level. If the pro-charter group told the voters that there's an increased focus on the budget and budget control, doesn't that imply that budget decisions would be made publicly? The administration's interpretation of our policies is that the mayor can move money wherever he wants without the consent of council. He doesn't need to bother vetoing an item, just ignore it. And I explained, or I highlighted some of those things in this handout. Is that the checks and balances the charter promised? I don't think so. For one year, we've sort of thrown up our hands and said, well, the citizens voted for this new, strong mayor, and that's not what they voted for. They voted for a charter with a mayor-council form of government, and that charter gives us responsibilities that we need to step up and take. In July, we'll start having our budget workshops, and we need to decide if these are just going to be a charade. If our budget is meaningless, we oughtn't to waste our time. I'm not asking for action today. This is too big of an issue. It's much bigger than logos and branding, but as we go into our budget process, we should really consider the individual roles of the bodies of the government and the collective roles as a council in developing the budget. I believe we should discuss this at the beginning of our budget workshops, and then we can work together on a budget that meets our goals. And when things are changed, we won't stand by and let it be changed unless we have input. Meanwhile, I think the community should and will be outraged about the expenditure on this advertising. And we ultimately will be held accountable. It's not just the mayor who will face the citizens. Whether we approve this, or we just turn a blind eye and let it get done, and I think it's time for this council to seize our responsibilities that we have under this charter. And if you have any questions about the information in the handout, I can answer those. Thank you.
Okay, and thank you for bringing that up. To that end, we do have a workshop coming up at the end of this month, and it's probably better to bring it up under new business, but it seems germane to what Dr. Pratt has been saying, that we've got a number of issues like that to deal with. I'm going to ask Mr. Gerald to chair that meeting, that I hope all of us can attend. And I would like for him to divide the meeting up and to have. One is go in and look at our strategic vision. I'm hoping that we don't have to spend a whole lot of time on that. I think we've got a pretty nice strategic vision. There may be a couple of things we need to add to it or tweak some of the existing items out there. Discussion needs to be held, though. I mean, we just have to review. But the other half of the meeting is for us to work together to solve a whole lot of these things, that we're still in the growing pain on parts of it. I think the mayor's past his growing pains. I think he's pretty certain about what it is he wants to do. But I think we, as a council, have to find a way to define ourselves within the boundaries of the charter and suppp precedent that we've already set about what we've done or have not done. And also, I'd like for it to see it be kind of a team-building exercise. We don't have to get on, all onto the same page. It doesn't have to be a kumbaya, but some sort of certainty of purpose and what our role is, and I just, I've got, I trust Mr. Gerald to get us there. So. Oh, lots of lights. Okay, I don't know who turned theirs on first, but I'm going to go to Mr. Gerald, since I invoked his name.
Thank you, Mr. President. And one of the things that I will use, hopefully, to our benefit, and I want all of you to consider this, an assignment, if you will. In order to have an effective strategic planning session, it will require that all of us review the materials prior to coming to the session. That's mandatory. If you don't do that, we'll be wasting an entire day. And as any teacher would tell you, we give assignments. We know that sometimes some students follow them and some of them don't. But in the absence of a thorough review, you'll have an opportunity to get your legal questions answered by our team of attorneys prior to the meeting. We don't want to have a meeting in which we're going to discuss and try to interpret, still again, the rules, the laws, the limitations, guidelines, and so forth. So I want you all to please prepare yourselves for this event so that we can be, we can have a successful strategic planning session and come out of it, because you know, it's becoming monotonous in committee of the whole sometimes when we are attempting to interpret some of the rules and regulations, the boundaries and guidelines that are clearly defined and delineated for both council's actions and authority and the mayor's actions and authority. And those seem to be the things that, seem to be the things that we're trying to clear up. We spend hours debating procedure. And all I ask is that you prepare yourselves before coming to the meeting, and that way we will have a smooth and an effective outcome for this strategic planning session. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, and so I take it that you're willing to chair that meeting?
I've done things like that before and worse, but I can do this.
All right, all right, thank you, sir. Ms. Myers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to thank Dr. Pratt for the statements she made. I have the same concerns, and I think I've expressed them on this council numerous times as to the balance of power and what our role is in terms of the proper balance of power. I have concerns that there is an imbalance, a great imbalance of power as this city is presently operating. And I'm really looking forward to our strategic planning workshop where some of these issues can be addressed and vetted. So I just wanted to let you know that I really agree with you and appreciate your insight and courage in bringing this issue forward. I know that this issue concerns a lot of citizens. I've had numerous conversations with citizens regarding the council and its role in this government. We are the governing body. We need to be the governing body, and we need to act like the governing body. But thank you. And I'm looking forward to working with council the end of this month.
Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I wanted to thank you for your efforts in getting us organized. I did want to offer an option that we used during our charter checkup, is what it was, the workshop that we did last end of July, early June, end of June, early July, I believe, where we actually emailed information to Ms. Major for consideration for that meeting, because we do have the strategic considerations, but we also have many other issues. If you'll recall, there were some general assignments of council members to take a look at the, all of our policies, and I'm happy to revive that and have Ms. Major send it back out, so we can at least not have to read all of the policies in depth, but be ready to discuss anything that we might have in mind as well for that. And also, I would like to thank Dr. Pratt for bringing up the concerns that she had, and point out that part of this new audit selection committee, we have a state law that we have to be obviously compliant with, 218 dot 391, paren 2, that requires the financial audit. But there are some optional considerations that this new committee can look at for performance audit. And it does address the issue of, are these policies being followed? Is the purchasing policy being followed? Are the departments that we see to exist, are we approving the department heads? All the things that we've had questions about over the last year, I believe, can be considered under the performance portion of the audit. So I just wanted to put that out there for the folks that are approved.
Yeah, I think that's an excellent, if you remember, even before we seated the new government, I had talked about, you know, an audit function for
I as well.
The council, that, and we tend to get hung up on the dollars and cents part of it, but not the other part of the audit. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just going to request a copy of Councilwoman Pratt's memo. I was not given a copy prior to the meeting.
Okay, well, good. Now, back to the audit selection committee. Congratulations, Ms. Mack. And, but we have a tie for second place. And Madam Clark, how do you want to handle that?
I have ballots ready.
You have ballots ready, okay. The choice will be between Ms. Laura McKnight and Mr. Samuel Watson. new business. And we have four items. The ESP, the West Side Library, homeless, and somebody can help me out here, there was a fourth one hanging around out there. But we'll do the ESP one first. Mr. Downs, we may call on you in a moment to speak. I do want to make some remarks about this. I've told the director of ESP, and I think I've even said this publicly at the committee meetings or maybe the council meetings, there's a few votes that I've taken in the five and a half years that if I could go back and change them, I would. But there's really only one vote I ever made that I really regret, and it might not seem like that big of an issue to somebody, but to me, it turned out to be just a huge mistake on my part, and it had to do with ESP and plumbers. That ESP, in a response to Ivan and Dennis, had gotten into what some people called the plumbing business, because you guys were just so covered up with everything else that some of these little jobs that had to do with running gas lines and water heaters wasn't anywhere near as big as an insurance job that you're going to get on a damaged house. And I don't blame you for that, but it put ESP in a position where they had to service their customers. I think naively, I looked at it at the time, as government competing with private business. And I've come around a long ways on that, that ESP is a business. It's not a government function. It operates like a business. It makes a profit like a business does. And so I have learned to make that distinction. But let me tell you the reason that my vote has haunted me so much. People not even knowing that the city owns ESP. I'll be talking to a buddy of mine, and he'll say, you know what? I want to go with gas, but I've been trying to get a plumber over there. This is after there was a fairly nasty fight, to be able to kick ESP out of that business. And since I've been trying to get a plumber over there for two months, and guy keeps promising to come and says, he came and he dug up my yard, and then he went away for a month. And that they just said, we can't get anybody to come out here and do this. I don't know why ESP ever stopped doing that. And that's been three different friends of mine that have said that. And as far as I know, they don't even know that this city council sits as kind of like the board of directors for this enterprise. So this is going to be, this is going to be tough sell for me, and some may say it's apples and oranges. I'm not so sure. We've got a service that, as the board of directors for ESP are being asked to provide to its customers and future customers, and I want them, I don't want to tie their hands on that. But I'm open for discussion, to hear from you and my fellow board of directors. And I'm going to call on Dr. Wu first.
Thank you very much, Councilman Hall. I remember that night quite well, because the room was full of plumbers. As I recall, I think I was the only vote in favor of ESP. And I don't blame anybody for how they voted, but my basis, what I want to do is explain why I voted the way I did. ESP is not only an enterprise committee of the city, just like the airport and other enterprise functions, they're charged with making money. The money that they make, profit, in past years, has allowed us to pass through six to eight million dollars of services to our citizens by not having to tax them. So in other words, it's not just money that's earned, it's money that's earned that allows us as a council to provide fire, police, and other services to our citizens without increasing their taxes. The second point is that, Mrs. Suarez, I wish she was The second point is that if, Mrs. Suarez, I wish she was here, but I've asked them ever since we made that ruling to forbid ESP from putting in those installations. What's happened to natural gas growth? And the answer is, is plummeted since that time period. I don't have the exact figures, but I think once I can get them to you, it will show that they've been, you know. Well, I'll let you go and just
Well, Mr. Wu.
Right. Let me finish.
Go ahead.
No, I'm just, I don't have a lot of storage up here.
Right.
With your addressing me and then you addressing me, I'm getting behind on my thought process.
Okay. We don't mean to
You don't like it over me.
No, no, we don't mean to overwhelm you.
You know, I would have to disagree that any of that had to do with the ESP sales because I have to tell you all that my income has plummeted since then. I believe everybody's income has plummeted since '08. We've had record number closes, so it's directly related to the market. And as far as Mr. President basically saying that the local plumbers are providing a lousy service, that's basically what I was just told. Well, I disagree. You know, that's three people. We satisfy thousands. I wished it was thousands now, but it's not. Go ahead.
Well, so what happened is, is that, and Councilman Mack was on, I think council at the time we had the discussion, if you go and look at the data, what happens is if you don't get a house when it's built, from what I'm told, it can be up to 10 years before you ever have a conversion. We really compete against Gulf Power. They advertise every single day. And so they give all kind of incentives and whatever. And to compete with them, we have to do the same type of thing. If they're doing something that's detrimental to your business, then, you know, I don't think the purpose of what we're doing here is to do that. But when you're providing six to eight million dollars of tax-free services to your citizens, that's something that I think we have to look at very seriously.
Well, the biggest issue I have with it, Gulf Power is not setting up meetings, having price fixing meetings and not notified.
Mr. President.
And when I read
Hold for a second.
When y'all did
Mr. Gerald's wanted to interject here.
Yes, and thank you for the opportunity to do that because in the interest of opportunity and preparation for this discussion, that we're going to put on the committee of the whole meeting.
Well, I'm not so sure about this. This has been a decision of the executive. The policy, as far as I know, is put into place. I don't know what our ability is to overturn that. And so the discussion may be here moot. I think it's interesting. And Mr. Reynolds may have an answer for us on that.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. This was not a decision of the executive. It was a recommendation of the executive that was approved by this body.
Right.
So I just wanted to clear
Through the budget process last year, right?
It was actually post-budget process and Mr. Barker can probably give a little more clarity than I can on that. But it was during some of the post-budget discussions. And the only issue that council had at that point, because this is not the same program that was voted down that night, by the way. And this particular program was brought forward and fully vetted by this council. And then ESP executives relied upon that decision, had been moving forward. And the only issue that council had at that point was notification, which is exactly what we have provided. And so, you know, we've already started this process forward.
Okay. All right. But, Mr. President, my point without objection is that I do believe that if we placed it on the committee of the whole agenda, whether it's a discussion item or an action item, and based on Mr. Reynolds' comments, there is a need for us as council members to get a thorough understanding of the facts as it relates to this action. And having it on the committee of the whole as a discussion item would then give us, give them an opportunity to prepare for the meeting, their defense, if any, and to bring people with him to support their position. But right now, he's sort of, as he indicated a minute ago, sort of sparring back and forth with, you know, your question, Dr. Wu's questions, and then comments by Mr. Reynolds. And I thought we were in the process of putting certain items on the committee of the whole so that we will have ample time to discuss them and to prepare for the discussion in order for it to be effective.
And I'd certainly entertain a motion for such. But I just want to caution us, though, if this had been put on the agenda before we had the discussion, we've passed it. And I'm not saying that there's just the one person out here that would show up for the meeting, but we've heard from one person and already looking at reinventing the will. And that, I've just got some concern about that. But it council's pleasure, if you want to, so moved to get that put on the agenda.
I would so moved if you repeat the list. You said that there were four items. You named three and the fourth one has escaped to me as well.
Well, yeah, the, but we'll handle each item separately here. One's the West Side Library, the other one's the homeless issue, and then the ESP plumber issue.
Then I would move that we put those items on the agenda for our next committee of the whole.
Okay. So just, you just want to hand all three of them one time?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's fine. And I'd just like to give some direction to the mayor's staff on ESP, is either the city administrator, the city finance director, or Mr. Suarez, or any combination of those. Give us a refresher on what we did last fall. And that, I think, would make a good starting point for discussion. Okay. All right. Four lights. Dr. Wu, you've already spoken. Mr. Townsend.
Yes, okay.
Okay. Ms. Dewes.
Just very quickly, with the ESP, and I understand the program as Mr. Reynolds explained it, I think of greatest concern was the purchasing of equipment. Do I understand that correctly?
That is, that is a big concern. And the other concern was, is we, the plumbers, were not notified of any of these actions of Don Suarez. And whenever this was rescinded back in '08, when we were suffering so much, I was told, as well as all the other plumbers, that we would be definitely notified of any implement, any ESP implementing any programs in the future. And we were not notified. I didn't find out about this until just Monday.
Okay. So my concern
I didn't even know what the
My concern, Mr. President, then, would be the purchasing policy and how this was handled internally at ESP. If we can better understand that as council, as part of our briefing.
Okay. All right. Fine.
It's the purchasing policy and also the price fixing of the whole program.
Oh, and Ms. Myers, you're up next, but we need a second on Mr.
I seconded.
Oh, you did. Okay. Gotcha. Thank you. Ms. Myers.
Well, I had my light on before the motion. I support the motion and I just want to make sure that Reverend Hunter is notified that it will be on the committee of the whole so he will be sure, if somebody could make sure that he's notified. I'll see if I can find his phone number and notify him also.
Let me see if I've got it. His phone number is on the card here, so the clerk would be able to supply that to you. Would you be the one willing to notify him, please?
I'll be willing to call him, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sorry, Mr. President. You know, I share your concerns regarding the item that we have discussed to a significant degree on two or three or four occasions. And once we get things implemented, time, and actually implemented and started implementing, and then we're going to bring them back to the committee. I just think we're going around in circles and it appears that everything that comes forth where an individual has some sort of objection, had an opportunity to come and speak for us on numerous occasions, and then we back down and then we discuss it again. Additionally, on the particular items that you are going to bring back, my preference would be to vote on them on an individual basis rather than saying that we're going to bring them all back. Specifically on that, on the library issue, we have talked about this West Side Library for decades, if you will, and we're going to discuss it some more. I just don't know what else we can say about it. We've been through numerous meetings. We've had various designs. We're going to have another meeting discussing the design. Citizens had ample opportunity to come forth and speak to it. I just feel that we will never make any progress if we continue to do this type of antics and because of some small objection. We're trying to accommodate the citizen and make something of quality, but it just appeared to me that we're going around in circles. So if possible, I'd like to make a motion that rather than vote on all three of those, that we take each one individually.
Okay. So I guess that's a substitute motion. Is there any discussion on that? I know you've got your light on, Mr. Mayor, or Mr. Reynolds. I'd like to hold that for a moment. Dr. Wu.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'd just like my colleagues to consider that we're going down a very slippery slope because we're sitting here making policy. And then a week and a half later, after staff's gone out to implement what we have instructed them to do
Yeah.
We're saying, oh, wait a minute. You know, timeout. And this is the second time we have done that within two weeks. It has nothing to do with you, Mr. Downs.
Yeah.
But how can anybody have any confidence in anything that we pass? If a week or two later, we're going to say, wait a minute, oops, you know, we didn't mean what we did two weeks ago, how's staff going to know how to react? Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Pratt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sort of conflicted on this because I
Remember, remember the motion before
No, no, no.
Right now, divide it up into three.
Okay. All right.
Not the gas issue.
Okay. Well, it's not quite on splitting, but on the motion of bringing them back. I just think, to some extent, it doesn't necessarily need to be a discussion item, but I think valid concerns have been raised and it would be nice for all of us to get some information about each of these things. You know, the library, what's the status, where things are going. So it's more responding to the citizens' requests by sharing that information with all of us possibly during the committee so that if they want to raise more issues about it. I don't know that it needs to be the full-blown discussion, but I think that there have been some interesting concerns raised and it would be nice to get a little more information for them. And since we weren't able to answer them tonight, for us as well. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Myers, and again, this is on whether to divide the vote up.
Well, I'm in favor of all three of these being placed as agenda items on the committee of the whole. So obviously, I'm willing to vote, I'm going to vote against the motion since I'm going to support all three of them anyhow. But, so, that's my position on that.
Mr. Gerald's.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. And just briefly, I want to point out that the question of the library is not with the design of the library. The objection, as I understood it from Reverend Hunter, was relocating that library branch versus, because there had been no discussion back in '05 when we set aside $1.5 million for a West Side Library. And in the interim, we opened up the West Side branch. And somehow, the $1.5 million got included in the Legion Field Community Center. And as I understand from what was pointed out at the meeting at Corrine Jones, was that the new, the new design of the library will be slightly or somewhat smaller than the one that exists on Savanty.
Well, Mr. Gerald, so we may get a chance to discuss that. Right now, it's whether to divide the vote up or not, the substitute question. Is it voted on three different items or as a whole? That's the motion now.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just ready to vote on all three and move on and get your background information and then we can go from there.
Okay. Okay. So this is to divide the motion up into three different votes.
Councilmember Myers. Share. It's all
Okay.
And that fails, no, I know that passes on a five-three vote. Okay. So we've got, we still have the three items here before us, but they'll be voted on separately. The first one is ESP, and Mr. Gary Sansing has indicated that he wants to speak.
Mr. President, while we wait for him, can you announce the final tally?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Are you back with the new ballots yet? We had a tie. So we, yes.
Oh, no.
So somebody needs to move off.
That was going to be my question.
Yeah. 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 Sure.
If we can appoint both, that'd be fine.
I think we could.
I'll make a motion that we accept both, since there's a tie.
Second.
Okay. We got a motion and a second discussion. Please vote. As unanimously, congratulations to Mr. Samuel Watson and Laura McKnight.
Way to go.
Okay. So, look forward to working with you. All right. Good. All right. So now we're at the ESP issue. Mr. Sansing.
Here is Sansing, 1517 East Jackson, citizen of the city and the county. I remember that night. And I'm sort of be off cue a little bit. I'm sorry I was late. Was involved with problems. But, you know, services, like right here, you know, it's hard to get good service, but the main thing, it's hard to get good material to build things. And one time I took a bunch of, oh, since '08, where I used to buy plumbing supplies, it's no longer around. I have to go to Loeb's and, well, and buy stuff that is second rate. Everything is second rate now. And I know I'm off subject, I'll just, I was going to speak to the plumbing problems.
Okay. All right.
Another time. Oh, I also am favor of libraries, but I favor what John Gerald was saying. We don't know where the money went.
Okay. Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. President. And most especially, thank you, Dr. Wu. I speak as a representative of staff. And I ask this council that if you have questions about something and you don't think it's the right policy, then don't vote for it. We rely upon the votes of this body. Staff puts efforts into the votes of this body. We spend money based upon the votes of this body. If, from a staff perspective, if this body is constantly changing its mind, then we are wasting time, we are wasting efforts, we're wasting money, all of which frankly, since 2008, has gotten smaller and smaller and smaller. So please, if you don't think it's the right thing to do, then vote something down. And then staff can then use our abilities and time elsewhere. I would just ask, as, you know, in the future, when you make your decisions, please keep that in mind and recognize that, you know, what you do, what you vote on matters and staff relies upon that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Dr. Pratt.
I was just going to respond a little bit to Mr. Reynolds. And I think I'm going to vote in favor of this tonight, but not in the favor of us reconsidering but, you know, our action, but really addressing the concerns. Because I just don't feel like we're
we're able to answer his questions tonight, and it would be nice to have the answers provided both for his sake and for ours. It could be done in a memo form or something, but if it's on the agenda and an information item, I think that that will help us all know what's going on and how we're moving forward. Thank you.
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I wanted to make it clear as well that I stand behind my vote previously, and I understand Mr. Reynolds' clarification on most of the issues that were brought forward. The purchasing was an issue, and also the communication of the intentions of this program. And I think Committee of the Whole is the appropriate forum for Mr. Morris and anyone else that's interested to gain better understanding of what is happening, and if there is a flaw, for us to at least acknowledge that there's one moving forward and correct it if possible. But I don't look to reverse a vote on a program that I read in detail and understood at that time, and I do still support, so I don't want that to appear to be my intentions. Thank you.
Mr. Gerald.
Thank you, Mr. President, and my concern would be, and I understand what Mr. Reynolds is saying about the efforts of staff, the time, the money, energy, and so forth. However, I also realize the fact that as times change, conditions change, and sometimes it requires review to make sure that we made the right decision in the first place. We're not all that sure that what we did back then is applicable now. So we have to look at it, and the discussion of whatever it is we're going to do with it gives us an opportunity to evaluate the decision that has been made to see if it's working, and if so, working for whom. So it deserves a review, so that we will have a better understanding on both sides, on behalf of the gentleman at the microphone, as well as on counsel and staff, in terms of what we did. Did it really work, or did it have an adverse effect on the people that it is supposed to be working for? And having said that, I think it deserves some review or further information for both sides, so that we can then legitimize and understand better the decision that was made before. Thank you, sir.
Okay, and thank you. And to bring this up for vote, we do need a motion on this.
I like the motion that this item be placed on the next Committee of the Whole for discussion.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Please vote. Okay, and that fails on a two, three, six vote. Okay, so now that brings us to the West Side Library issue. Ms. Myers. Mr. Downs, that item won't be on the next Committee of the Whole.
So what was the item that was just voted on? Oh, so you're voting on them separately?
We're voting on it separately, and so the ESP one is been...
So that means it's a dead issue?
Yes, sir.
Mr. President?
Well, I thank you all very much for your time, and I'm hoping I'll be welcome at the next meeting, and I'll bring some more information. If something is illegal about the process, would that bring it back before you all?
Well, I'm sure it could, and there's always the court system as well for remedy.
Well, I mean, just on the notification of public, you know, notifying the public of just what was voted on, on ESP, because as far as I know, there was no notification given to us like we were promised back in '08.
I'm not sure that that promise had, it certainly violated. If you weren't notified individually, I guess that violated the spirit of it, but from a legal point of view, I'm not aware of any requirement other than our normal advertising that we do for every meeting that we have. It's both on the website, it, we advertise in the newspapers.
I was just wondering, because of the sensitivity of this issue and how many people it affects, and the remaining board that was here, the councilmen that were here before, it just seems like it would have been, you know, the mayor said that he would inform us. I just figured because of the, you know, the relations, the relationship between the plumbers and ESP and the board, that that would have been...
I see you have a pen there. What I'd like for you to do is tomorrow is call the city attorney's office and discuss this with them. 435-1615. It's Mr. Messer. 435-1615.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Dr. Pratt.
And I wanted to say also that he's welcome to email us. The issue's not dead, it's just not going to be a discussion item on the next agenda. But you have valid questions, and if you will share them with me, I will try and help you find the answers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Myers.
Yes, as to the West Side Library, this discussion item is not for the purpose of discussing whether or not the West Side Library should be moved. That's already been decided. The purpose of discussing this is to find out if there's some way we can, the city, can facilitate something being in place there for the people who are going to lose that library. That is a great resource for people in the low-income housing projects there, for the elderly people who live at the Inglewood. They're not probably going to go to Legion Field. I have looked at the condition of the sidewalks, if people would walk to Legion Fields. It's about six blocks, they have to cross Savanty Street. Most people who live in public housing do not have cars. Most people who live in the Inglewood apartments do not have cars. So it's doubtful that those people are going to go to Legion Field. Now, the purpose of having this place on the agenda is not to address the move of the library, but to try to figure out if there's some way we can facilitate a partnership between private businesses and maybe the churches in that community with the help of the city, to have something in place there for that, those low-income communities that will probably not be accessing the Legion Field. That's the purpose of having it for a discussion item. So I'm going to make a motion that we have on the next agenda of the whole, a discussion item regarding the resources needed to provide the community with a library-type resource. We have that discussion at the next Committee of the Whole.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
Second. Okay, there's a motion and a second. Ms. Mack.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilwoman Myers made the clarification that I was going to make on behalf of Reverend Hunter, since he and I had long discussions, and he could not stay. So my point has been already made. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gerald.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I thank Ms. Myers for making that clarification, because my concern as well is not a question of whether or not the library will move, because as I understand it, the design-build process of the Legion Field Community Center is already in place. My concern is about retaining and making sure that library services or similar services are available to the individuals who live in that neighborhood. And I agree that it might be a difficult event for people from both Morris Court and Otis Court, as well as those from the Inglewood Senior Housing to get to the new location. But from what I've been hearing, the Savanty Street Branch has quite a bit of activity in it, it is used quite heavily, and if there is a way that we can find the resources to maintain that location for the benefit of the people who live in that area. And I recall very quite vividly when I had to put up a one-man battle in order to get that facility where it is today. It was to benefit the students at the, at Warrenton Middle School and those who attend Ascambu High School, kind of different from the feelings of the then-chairman of the Blue Ribbon Committee, a former superintendent. But I felt that since the closing of the Alice Williams Library back in the '70s, that there were no resources available to the children and the adults in that area who are taking heavy advantage of the facility where it is. So I don't want to get into an argument about the Legion Field and what their plans are, but my concern is maintaining the facility where it is to provide those services that are needed to the individuals who live in that part of the city of Pensacola. Thank you.
Well, I'm really torn on this, because any time the idea of libraries comes up, I want to say yes to it. I'd rather have more than less. But we're not even assured that we're going to get the funding from the county this year, you know, for it, and they pick up 70% of the operating bill for our library system. And they had even threatened that they were just going to cut off all funding to the library altogether. We're looking at dwindling revenues coming in vis-à-vis ad valorem taxes, and we've got this year and next year and the year after that, rising pension costs that could almost double. Right now, pensions grab up more than 100% of our ad valorem taxes, and it could double within the next three to four years. And so it's not a matter of the capital expenditure, it comes down to the operating expense. Now, I've heard stuff, suggestions to keep it in that same neighborhood or in that same location and allow some nonprofits and churches going there and help out. I guess it's worth discussion, but ultimately, I think that when it is our responsibility we're operating the library, is that we have to look at the cost, and I just don't see the dollars there. Okay. Did that, are you finished, Mr. Gerald?
No, I'd just like to add to my comments that in '04, '05, when the Blue Ribbon Committee made its recommendation for library services in that area, they had the gall to recommend a bookmobile to service those children in that neighborhood. And that is how, for those of you who may have forgotten what the battle was all about, once Bill Malloy, the former superintendent, recommended building a Southwest Branch, which we did, and building the, a new Trion Branch, which we did, and to offer us a bookmobile was an insult. And it took me a lot of energy to get that library there, and as I've indicated several times this evening, that it is being quite heavily used, it's being appreciated, and frankly, I see no reason to move it. Now, if there's a question of a library at Legion Field, I have no problem with that, no argument for that. As I indicated, the design-build process is already in process. We're not talking about doing anything at Legion, we're talking about providing services that there is easy access for the individuals that are living in that community. We have elementary school students, and I go by there frequently to see what's going on, and I just cannot see them, although I've heard some rhetoric about putting in a traffic light in the middle of Savanty's, and that would solve the problem, but I just don't buy that. If the branch is where it is, if it's doing well, all the speculation about funding, et cetera, et cetera, can be addressed at a later time. But it's up and running now, and if we are going to truly serve our citizens based on their needs and convenience, as we do in many cases, then my recommendation would be to discuss the issue, to see if we can find a way to keep that branch where it is. And whatever happens anywhere else in town, I'm not worried about that, I won't, I don't engage myself in every battle. But to make a long story short, if we can just agree tonight to talk about it and give ourselves an opportunity to look for additional resources, and by the way, when the battle, when I was in the heat of the battle, I don't recall any input or any people coming before council to help me with that battle. And I feel quite proud that I was able to convince a council, hard council, to move forward with that effort. And if there's anything that we can do to keep it where it is, I would be in favor of that. Thank you.
Mr. Townsend. Dr. Pratt.
Thank you, Mr. President. This issue and the homeless issue that I'm sure is coming up next, both of those are issues that we need a lot of information. I think that there's community players who should be invited, there should be a broader discussion. Having it just plain appear on our agenda for a discussion item, we're not going to get anywhere. We're going to all share our stories about what a library means to us or to someone we know, but without a real concerted effort on getting that information, I don't know that we're going to get anywhere. I think that these are the kinds of things that will be great once our council staff person's in place, and we can say, you know, council staff, we were really concerned about the library situation for the West Side. Could you pull together some neighborhood players and get them to come to council, other resources, and we can talk about what are some neat directions we could go? But by putting it just on our agenda without any more support and information, I think we're just going to be beating a dead horse that we didn't even know was a horse. We can't tell because we don't have enough information. So I urge the council to consider waiting on these two issues. We've already expressed that we support the moving forward with Legion Field, hoping that it will be a good library. And let's wait till we can gather information and make informed decisions and have great suggestions, rather than figure out from our own heads. Thank you.
Okay. And Ms. Myers, I just want to caution you that the motion before us is, well, you made it, is whether to put this on the agenda or not. I've allowed a couple of people to actually argue it in place of having it on the agenda. And so, but I'm welcome, welcome for you to take your turn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, my response to Dr. Pratt's statements as to why it shouldn't be on the agenda is because we need to discuss what information we would need to look into this issue. I'm afraid if we wait and put it off, it will just be ignored and the library will be moved, and then there will not be any resources over there. That's why I think it needs to be on the agenda, so we can have a discussion. It doesn't have to be a long discussion about what information we need and what, who some of the stake players are who should be involved in a discussion. So I think that there are compelling reasons to put this on the agenda. So, that's my suggestion. I hope that council votes to put it on the agenda.
Okay, thank, thank you. Please vote. And that fails on a three, I'm trying, four. Okay, that fails on a four-four vote. Okay, thank you. And the last one is the homeless issue. Anybody want to make a motion on that? Ms. Myers.
I don't know what we, as a city, can and should be doing to address the issue of homelessness. I don't see that we can do anything very effective without a joint effort with the county. I think that this is an issue that we would have to work with the county on, simply because a lot of the resources that people who are homeless use, some are in the county, some are in the city. However, I don't believe that it's an issue that we should ignore. I don't know how to go about approaching this issue. I don't know that having an agenda item to discuss... I don't know that having an agenda item to discuss this issue, it may be helpful. Councilman Gerald suggested establishing some sort of an advisory committee to look into the issue. So I would like to hear from other council members. I'm not going to make the motion at this time.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree that this is not just a city issue, it's a Pensacola, Scammy County issue, and I would hope that we could get a group together comprising of city and county as an advisory committee or sector committee in terms of trying to get some additional information and come up with some recommendations. I think that would be the way to go. So if we are scheduled to have a city-county commissioners' meeting, I would hope that we could have the city administrator and the mayor and the county administrator, they could get together, and then we could discuss it as an agenda item during the city-county commissioners' meeting. And then also, as a, if we could get some statistical information in terms of what agencies that we do have available here that are currently existing for our strategy meeting, we might can have an hour discussion on that. Somewhere, I remember just recently, a considerable amount of money came into this county to deal with the homeless and have tried to secure homes for them on a temporary basis. I don't know what happened in that regard. They were even looking at some of the properties out by the airport and homes out that way. So I think there's been some effort, and there might be some monies already that have come down. Probably we need to just do a research and see what we've got existing and go from there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Dr. Wu. Mr. Gerald.
Thank you, Mr. Gerald, Mr. Gerald's here. We're going around and around. First of all, I have a couple of comments, and then I will make a motion to go ahead and put it on the agenda for discussion. You know, a few minutes ago, we approved a measure to send a proclamation to vendors, so to speak, at stores to restrict the sale of candy, I mean, of cigarette-flavored candies. And it's as simple as that. If we know, and thank Ms. Myers for so aptly pointing out, and we understand that it is a city-county issue, I see nothing wrong with having it on the agenda and inviting those representatives from the county to come to our meeting to discuss the issue. So that if they have any objections or any information that, about things that are going on in the county, we can talk about it jointly in the meeting along with the individuals who are pushing the idea. So it's not something that we cannot do. However, it is something that we must do, because if we leave the problem, if we ignore it, we will allow it to fester. So I move that we put it on the committee of the whole agenda, invite the county representatives with their input, and versus avoiding it, we can all sit down and talk about it jointly. And that's my motion.
I second the motion.
We've got a motion in a second. Could I just offer a suggestion, is that you keep the motion the same, but that we place it on the agenda for the next city-county meeting?
Do we have a date? Has that been scheduled?
That has not been scheduled, but...
Can we put a timetable on it, within the next thirty days, sixty days, or?
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure.
I understand, we need time to notify them of our intention.
Yeah.
But next thirty days, next thirty days, sixty?
You've got a proper motion on, is there any discussion on this? Is to have the issue of homelessness and city council's role in that and what the county's role is, invite county representatives to come participate in that discussion at the next committee of the whole meeting. Yes, sir.
There's been an organization, I believe it was United Way, that spent quite a considerable time looking into this. I believe it was called Pathway to Change, and I believe you've been involved with that group as well. And it seems like to ignore what they've come up with and all the work they've done would be a shame. I believe this is something important that we need to look at. I don't know if we can have all the information we need by month, you know, our next meeting, that would be my only concern. But I believe that beside the county, I would like to also suggest that the people who've been working for years in this Pathway to Change be invited as well.
Yeah, I spent a year and a half on the Poverty Solutions team that, sponsored by United Way, was administered by Catholic charities, and may have been even as much as two years, very rewarding experience there. I'm not against discussing it in some limited fashion, but because I have done so much work with the homeless, and there are so many organizations out there that really are quite professional at this, and one of the things that Bruni Emanuel taught me, and I'm sure most of you guys know him, is no matter how well-intentioned government is, or even some other benevolent group, let's just say a church, for example, intend to be, is that oftentimes they do a little more harm than they do good by luring people away from the trained professionals that have all the, well, most of the resources that they need. And that quite oftentimes put people in more jeopardy than they would have been. I don't think we have anybody here at the city that is qualified in that area. So I wish to have a magic wand where I could, you know, do it. And I still continue to try to help the homeless. Sent a guy over to Jacksonville that called me four days later. Somehow or another, he ended up in Tampa needing a bus ticket back to Pensacola, so I could house him for about five days before we got him sent off to Houston, and I got a phone call from him in Tulsa. So I'm not sure what's going on there, but my efforts with those guys continue. And even dealing with it on a one-on-one basis, I don't always have the answers, clearly. Okay, so we've got a, Mr. Sansing wants to talk about homelessness.
Can I call a question?
There's a motion on the floor to move the previous question. That requires a second.
Gary Sansing, fifteen seventeen East Jackson, citizen of the city and county. I don't know if I can be said, I can say that I've been homeless, but I've been out on the road, thumbing, and middling nowhere, or what I'm trying to say, at one time, I have been out. And luckily, in towns where there was no motels anywhere, or everything's closed. It is a valid issue even for someone like me. And I thank all of you for speaking to this. I mean, we're morally responsible for one another. Somehow or another, the city and the county got to get together and discuss things like this. I mean, when I travel in Europe, they don't have motels, they have hotels, but they have youth hostels. And I like to talk about looking at Hotel de la Paris, where five hundred people are sleeping along the Seine. It was wonderful to see that. Even, I mean, the youth hostels are filled up, and where do people stay? Luckily, I found places, but everybody can't. So what I'm saying, just that Ms. Myers is right, or council lady, bring it up and just discuss it. I mean, wherever you can have, maybe there aren't experts around, but maybe a minister or some caring soul that will speak to it, that's all. Discuss it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Hyer.
Rebecca Hyer, twenty-one oh-one Scenic Highway. I was a little bit frustrated listening to the speaker earlier who brought up the issue of homelessness. We've been talking about homelessness in the city for months now, and of course, the problem goes way back before that, but of course, the Occupy movement brought this kind of to the forefront. And why I was so frustrated is I've heard a lot of people over the last few months come to this microphone and bring up this issue, but no one's proposed any solutions. Nobody's come forth and said, if we did this, it would help the problem, not solve the problem, but help the problem. So what we need is people to come forth with concrete proposals, not just, we need to do something about this, or council, would you please solve this problem for us? Because we all know that you can't, you don't have a magic wand. You can't do that. But what we can do is we can form a task force. There are a lot of resources working on homelessness problems, and everybody knows a little bit of the piece, little piece of the puzzle, and I've talked to a lot of people and know a lot of people who are working on it. But if we could put together a group, if we can have a task force on community redevelopment, I don't see why we can't have a Pensacola task force to come up with a proposal, not just a problem identification, but actual concrete proposals of ways to address these needs. So I'd like to see the council take some action on calling for a task force to actually research the problem, bring in or get involved with all the experts that we have, we have a lot of expertise around here, and actually come forth with some coordinated proposals, perhaps just more communication and working together with all the different groups that are confronting different aspects of the whole problem, feeding people, housing people, medical care, all the different aspects. But I think that's a job for a group, a task force. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mueller.
The reason I'm concerned about this is because the face of homelessness is changing. It's no longer the down-and-out or the person who chooses to, you know, step out of society. It's the little old lady who can't, you know, can't afford her house anymore, can't hardly afford to feed herself, who's living at her car if she's lucky. You know, it's people's mothers and fathers and young children. And, you know, what some people might, might, you know, think of as, you know, when they think homelessness, or, you know, the homeless beggar coming up to you on the street and stuff, isn't really what the face of homelessness is anymore. So if you'll put it on the agenda, I will go out and get as many of the public players as I can to the meeting of the whole. I will personally take my time and go out and do that. I think, I have concrete suggestions, and we've been working on them behind the scenes, and I believe that this is an excellent time to move forward. And I think, I think with your help, we can make change here in Pensacola. Thank you.
Have you, Mr. Mueller, excuse me, have you talked with the people at Coalition for the Homeless?
No, I'm, we're more on a, not only the face has changed, but because of that, the way to deal with it, I believe this also changed.
I think you might be surprised at just how in tune the Coalition of the Homeless is on what the face of homelessness is in America generally, and specifically in Northwest Florida and even more, the Scammy County and Pensacola. So I'd urge you, before we reinvent the wheel, is go find out what effort the Coalition for the Homeless is doing now. It's just as a starting place.
And I'd be happy to take any other suggestions. If somebody would like to email me with a list of people to contact, or, you know, in case I don't have everybody that I need to do, I would love that. That would be great. But if you'll put it on the agenda, I will get as many of those people to that meeting as I can get. Thank you.
Mr. Townsend, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it's an excellent idea in terms of trying to get an advisory group together. I think if we put it on the agenda, it would be just like we're going now. We would be constantly going back and forth without any statistical evidence, without any knowledge of what other cities are facing this problem. And sure enough, other cities are facing this problem just like we are. We need to have a committee formed, do as the ladies suggested, and then come back and report, and then go from there. The committee maybe could be chaired by a council member, and then they meet separately and try to secure some citizens to work with us and go at this problem in this manner. But I think if we continue to talk as a group, we will not get anything accomplished because we just don't have the expertise in terms of having the knowledge of what's out there. We can be talking, but we need to find out what's out there, what they're doing, bring them in, invite them to participate, and then go from there.
Ms. Hyer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, Councilman Gerald's original suggestion was to do exactly what Ms. Hyer suggested, and that is to set up an advisory committee or task force, as she said. The council has the authority to set up advisory committees. The mayor has set up numerous advisory committees with very effective results, and I think that that's the reason we need to have a discussion on the agenda, and I think that should be the focus of the discussion, is how to go about doing this. So I would like to see it as an agenda item to focus on how we can set up a task force or an advisory committee. There is, I would like to tell you that there is a, if you want to know more about what agencies are helping the homeless, there are many groups and agencies, and they're listed in a book called The Street Survival Guide, that's published by the Coalition for the Homeless. I don't know if council members are familiar with it. It's a great resource that comes out every year. I'll make sure that council has a copy of it at our next committee of the whole, just for your information. But there are many resources here in the community, and the Coalition for the Homeless gets that information out to the homeless through The Street Survival Guide. If you don't have a copy of it, I'll make sure you get a copy.
Okay, thank you. I have several copies of that myself, that I frequently had the opportunity to hand out. But I just want you to think about something here for a moment. Coalition for the Homeless, that is, let's interject in their task force for the homeless. It already exists. It's not just one group, it's a blanket group of different organizations out there dealing with this problem. And I'm just not confident that something that's going to have the city council stamp of approval is going to improve upon that any. Mr. Gerald.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hopefully, I can simplify the matter. I believe the hesitation and the fear may be connected to the fact that we might be considering having it on the next committee of the whole. What I think we ought to do is to move it back, thereby giving us an opportunity to get those agencies. I'm hearing things about, well, this group is doing that. If they come before us and let us know, then we, as a council, will learn what they're doing. They will advise us and share that information with the people who are seeking it. But if it's a caution on the heels of trying to do it at the next Cal meeting, that may be premature. I would be willing to modify my amendment to move it back at least thirty days to give the opportunity to those players that are providing services, give them an opportunity to come before us, let us know. to come before us, let us know, educate us as a council. Because what I'm hearing is, "We don't know." Well, we don't know what we can do. Let's hear in a certain way, in terms of what services are being provided, they can then provide the availability of those services to the people who are in need. But we're going around and around about whether we need to talk about it. Yes, we do. And if it's in a matter of the next committee of the whole, that may be premature. Let's move it back 30 days, give all the players an opportunity to prepare their information and materials that they would like to circulate, and then perhaps we can move it from that point by giving people information that's available, making sure that we, as a council, know and understand what our limitations are. And if you're willing to do that, I think that may be the best approach, rather than sitting here until midnight, trying to decide whether or not we want to talk about it when we know we need to. So, bring in the players, and let's get it on the road. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Gerald, I think it was last council meeting, you made the argument in favor of going back to the committee system. Let me ask you, if you'd be willing to do this, you and Ms. Myers as chair and co-chair, is that we develop an ad hoc committee to explore what the city of Pensacola, as a governing body, can do about homelessness, and just take one of the meeting rooms here at City Hall, work with Mr. Mueller, work with Occupy Pensacola, and all the relevant players, and the two of you be chair and co-chair of that committee, and once you've made your findings, is then you make a report to the city council.
Second.
That would be a fine idea, except that the council as a whole would still be uninformed if they don't participate. In other words, when the question came up, "Do we want to put this on the agenda for a discussion item requiring a motion?", and the second, we sat silently until we thought about it, and had it not been brought to the floor to have the motion, then we wouldn't be talking about it at all. I'm interested in making sure that when council members are approached by their constituents on the street, or in the mall, or wherever, that they have the necessary background information so that they can answer those questions. And then we appear to be a council that's informed as to what the problem is and how to go about solving it. But in terms of, you know, I would not want to have an ad hoc committee set up where just Mrs. Myers, Ms. Myers and myself are there, and then the rest of council is still in the dark. They have a responsibility to want to be there, to get informed, so that we can make an intelligent decision collectively. But it's important that we all hear the same thing. We can gather information, but in the absence of other council members, it'll still be the same thing.
Okay. Dr. Wu.
Sometimes you make statements that may not be politically popular. But I would ask this body to consider, what is the function of local government? Function of local government is fire and police protection, garbage collection, janitorial service, in terms of sanitation service, I mean, streets and roads. Now, I like what Mrs. Hire said, and I agree with what Mr. Mueller said. I mean, I had a gentleman meet with me the other day that said that he's not had a job for a year and a half. And I really, really feel deep compassion for the situation this gentleman's in. But what is the function of city government? What do we tax people to do? And what do they allow us to do to tax money we collect? We're talking about putting together a group, and a minute ago, we said there was no money for a library. So, if this group meets and comes up with a recommendation, that we give them $500,000, we've had them spend all this time and energy, and we have no funds to give them? If you have no funds to give this group, then why have them come to you for recommendations? Now, dialogue, there's nothing to prevent people from having dialogue with every one of these groups that we've mentioned. But the only reason that I feel comfortable in mentioning what is the function of a government is that I gave a litany of what I've been involved with at the very beginning. And for those that are watching and think I'm a cruel, uncompassionate person, I'll reiterate real quick. I cooked at Loews and Fishes on a weekly basis for five years. I've worked on 20 Habitat for Humanity homes, and I rang the bell for Salvation Army for 15 years. But I don't know if the citizens of Pensacola are going to be comfortable with us collecting ad valorem tax, and then using that money for functions outside the boundaries of what we're set up to do. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. President. May I, just one more time? I'd like to withdraw my motion.
Thank you. All right, clear the lights, please. We're already moving to open forum. Thank you. Mr. Duvison.
What is BD News?
BD News is the news of the Belmont De Villiers.
Oh, Belmont De Villiers, okay, okay.
Belmont De Villiers area. In the absence of our representative, Mr. Spencer, tonight, since there was not a chance to share good news with this council, I wanted to share and invite you to come out to Belmont De Villiers and enjoy dining in a new opportunity that is opening up in the former De Villiers Cafe, a small addition to the Old Bunny Club. A group called Food for the Soul is opening. They will be serving breakfast and lunch. They begin Sunday at 12 o'clock. They will have on Sunday a sort of single buffet type thing to celebrate Mother's Day. But this is a couple of women who emerged from a community group there. They're excellent in the quality of what they do, and they have delighted us with good food in the last few months, and we're encouraged to move forward, form a business, and have a one-year lease there, and are diligently working to create a new food opportunity there. And I would like council to know that Belmont De Villiers is alive and well. I would also invite you to hop in a pedicab, which is now run by a group that are storing their pedicabs in the Belmont building, where we would have relocated the art center. We have 43,000 square feet available in that building, so when they say there was not enough space to grow, I believe we need to clarify that, not enough free space, perhaps, but there's plenty of space available. We will be continuing to work on the building there, and Mr. Spencer is quite aware, and I believe he would have given you some input there. A couple of other things I would like for you to know is that Truth for Youth pays tax on that building, although it is a nonprofit, because it has multiple tenants in the building, it is a tax entity. So, you are looking at a growing tax base in Belmont De Villiers. I would like to ask this council to look at contacting Pam Bondi regarding the mortgage money that will be coming forward. She's asking for input as to how that money could be spent. I would like for each of you to let her know that you want money coming to this community to assist nonprofits and agencies who are helping the citizens improve quality of life. And regarding that, Mr. Wu, you and I don't disagree very often, but as you illuminated the things that government should do, you did not feel that entering into putting a group of citizens together to solve a community problem was a function of government? I believe that is the number one function. And I would suggest that what you did earlier this evening with the art center was not among your list, but you did it anyway. So, I would really like for you to review that. And regarding how we work with NGOs, non-governmental organizations, I would respectfully request that this body ask the administration to have a full vetting of all financial conditions, legal status, full board of director listing, copies of all current bylaws, articles of incorporations, and any program history for each and every entity which comes to you and asks for an endorsement on a grant, a program, a sponsorship, a use of public land. We have had multiple organizations through the years who have given a wonderful marketing image of what they do, but when you dig down into the actualities of those organizations, sometimes they don't match the image that is created. And I believe this council and the administration deserve full knowledge of all debts, all ongoing issues that any organization that we come into partnership with are involved with. And my final thing is requesting that the CRA schedule a meeting so that we may have a report of the travel that was undertaken on behalf of the CRA, and so that the items that are coming before this council, which may impact CRA, may be discussed in terms of how they impact the CRA, because I'm finding that we're sort of disjointed in what we're doing for the CRA. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gerald, I guess you've got that on your list.
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Sansing. Dr. Wu, is it, okay, you're good. Mr. Sansing.
Gary Sansing, 1517 East Jackson, city of Pensacola, a citizen. You know, this is a very caring city and county. I love it. And no matter what, people try and help one another. For a poor county, it is generous to the utmost with time and energy and sweat. When I look at the world, well, listen to it, like I listened to a four-hour special on Frontline the last couple of weeks, dealing with the crisis we're in. A crisis, the world's in a crisis. And it's what I've been alluding to for over 10 years, mainly behind the scene to economists and so forth, from Dr. Harper. And now, they have to sell the beach to match a budget. Unbelievable, when they got an economist who's been, well, in his soft-spoken ways, what's happening? We've got millions of homes in the country underwater. I mean, when we talk about it, on Frontline, they said $7.7 trillion. And when you add that up to the dot-com bubble, you know, the Americans have been ripped off in the world by the greedy souls. But no matter what, we got to watch out for one another. We are responsible. So, I left, I mean, the guilty have got to be punished. And when I mean punished, not sent up to prison, but admonished, and said, "Hell, you did wrong. Let's correct that. Maybe you ought to take their billions of dollars away from them," or whatever, something. But listen, we are heading in the right direction. It's like, "I don't thank you enough, you city council people." For a start, allowing, I would say, most of them down on our corner are homeless, but they are representing an issue. It's Occupy Wall Street. Now, what that all is about is trying to tell you what some of us have been saying for 15 years, the greediest running the world, from Wall Street, Madison Avenue, K Street, that's a lobby group up in Washington. And you can even put us here, because we are not giving the citizens a fair warning of what's coming. So, as I keep saying, tighten our belts, help, help, help one another, and we'll get through this mess. But it's going to take us 10 years, at the minimum, five years halfway to recover. Bring the troops home, and when you do, you're going to have a lot of homeless vets, because a big proportion of the homeless are vets. And I think someone mentioned while I was trying to get ready to come down here about our police, but think, most of the vets cannot go home at night. Don't ever forget that. They're stuck miles away in some god-besaken land where they shouldn't be, for a start with, I'm referring to Iraq. And thank you for allowing us to protest on that. Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.